Good evening and welcome. The board concluded our executive session at 6:27 PM and there was no action taken during the executive session. I would like to call to order the regular CSD Board Meeting for October 11, 2022 at 6:34 PM. Thank you for joining us this evening. At this time, I ask everyone to join me in a moment of silent reflection. At this time, all who are able, please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic, where we stand, one nation, united in physical with liberty and justice for all.
Board members, are there any revisions to the agenda for this evening? Okay. Is there a motion to approve the agenda for tonight's meeting?
Motion to approve the agenda for tonight's meeting?
Thank you. May I have a second?
A second.
Thank you. All in favor of approving the agenda for this evening, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. The agenda for this evening is approved. Our next agenda item is the approval of the minutes from the previous board meetings and work session. May I have a motion to approve the minutes from the September Board Meeting and Work Session?
Motion to approve the minutes from the September Board Meeting and Work Session.
Thank you. May I have a second?
Second.
All in favor of approving the minutes from the September Board Meeting and Work Session, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. The minutes for the September Board Meeting and Work Session are approved. We have two spotlights tonight. Our first spotlight is from Fifth Avenue Upper Elementary School. Welcome the team from Fave.
My name is Shannon Stewart and I'm the ID Coordinator at Fifth Avenue. Fave is a great community and a building filled with strong leaders, dedicated and thoughtful teachers, but most importantly, curious and amazing students. It is one of our main goals to create opportunities for high academic achievement in an environment where students feel connected to one another. Fave offers many experiences outside of the classroom for students to engage, engage and feel connected to their peers. This evening, I, along with Karen Newton-Scott, Lynn Hansen, and Tragian Lockwood, are proud to have our students share their experiences above and beyond the classroom level to engage and connect with their interests and what it means to them. In addition, we will also hear from an SLT member about how the team supports the work to amplify a positive culture and climate at Fave. Thank you.
I'm going to record from up here too, so we'll get that for you.
Hi, my name is Lydia Robelard and I'm a representative for Young Ways of Excellence. Young Ways of Excellence is an after-school program at Fave. We're in fourth and fifth grade. We meet every other Thursday. In this program, this program is about how we can be more confident in ourselves and learn about each other and be engaged with each other. I participate in this program because I come up how to use my voice and develop a curiosity myself. I'm extremely grateful I got chosen for this program. I love this program because I get to find people that can connect with on various topics. For instance, at the end of each class, everyone stands in a circle and we compliment each other. After a compliment, we say thank you and pick another person. I also love that I get to learn about me before others. Like, on an airplane through the safety instructions, it says to put your license on yourself, then you can help others. Get to learn my history and then I can learn about others in my homeroom. The people in this program are all very different. We talk about our similarities and differences. When I say that, I mean we're all young black girls, but we're all different in our public ways. Some of us speak other languages, play different sports, or are in the band. Young Ways of Excellence is a safe space for young black girls like me to express ourselves about being found or judged.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Mallory Norman. Hi, my name is Mallory Norman and I'm in chorus. I'm learning being around others that have a shame and shamelessness. And of course, we learn how to build our singing skills. If it's for folks and our peers, we won't leave here like we came. I decided to become a song singer this year. I'm looking forward to singing at different places and showing off the improvement of our singing skills throughout the year. I can't wait for the adventures ahead with my chorus members. You might be wondering, what got me into singing? When I was younger, I loved turning on the radio and singing. I was recommended to chorus. When I heard school, when I hold, when I heard our skill started, was starting, I wanted to be in it. I can't wait for our first shift. And again, I'm Mallory Norman in chorus.
My name is Mal. My name is Mal. I joined her at T. Sing Girls Run at the school program Monday to Monday. I joined Girls Run because I have a big mind, which is why I'm training for and running back. I wanted to spend my, I wanted to spend my, better myself through, which I think what I love most about Girls Run is I could exercise with my friends and my mom. I like the lessons that I go to teach with students, look at something, kind to each other and believing in ourselves. This is, these are lessons that I will carry throughout my life, which is why I became Girls Run.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Zaire Ellen. I do GENTS. GENTS stands for Gentlemen Selling With the Need of Tools for Success. GENTS is an after-school program for young black men like me to help with counseling, masculinity, and strengthism. We do this by doing exercises like working on how we communicate with others and playing sports like baseball, football, and cricket. I am going participating in GENTS because I'm making a lot of new friends and it's nice to see people that look like me because it's not that many people in Fave that are African-American. Also, it's great to have a mentor that you can ask questions and help, where I will help a personal mentor.
Hi, my name is Stephanie Bergman. I joined orchestra because it's something I hadn't ever tried before and my background's playing piano. Orchestra always play a lot of music so we can get better and learn new notes. I've only played for two years, but I'm glad that they have brought orchestra to say some workers can have many opportunities to become, be a part of a musical group. In orchestra, we learn new, about new notes and how to read music. This can lead to a lifetime career. In orchestra, we have practice, we have to practice really hard to continue and get better. In orchestra, we also have the opportunity to ask peers for assistance in how to read the notes. This interaction encourages us to engage with our peers and learn from one another. Participating in orchestra provides me the opportunity to extend myself outside of school and sports. I believe this makes me a more well-rounded person and could possibly provide opportunities for a future in music.
Hi, my name is Laney Collins and I'm part of the reading bowl group at Fifth Avenue. I also participate in the monthly book club, in the monthly book clubs. I joined the reading bowl and book clubs because I like being able to meet up and discuss books and compete with other book nerds even if it is just once a month or every week. If you don't like competition, then I wouldn't suggest doing the reading bowls. But if you like to read and try new titles, then I would do either one. I personally like reading bowl the most because I love competition. I'm a competitor.
My name is Naomi Orkin and I'm a member of the Fave SLT. I have a third grader at Fave and a sixth grader at Fave. Our role as an SLT is to really keep a liaison with, between the administration and the community. If there's something the community is concerned about, we bring that back to the administration and problem solve as a group. One of the things that we really realized this past year when we were interviewing for some of the new assistant principals, for the new assistant principal, was there's a lot of magic within the walls of Fave and how can we bring that to the community and showcase our magic? And so that's what we've all sort of challenged ourselves to do this year is to make sure everybody knows what an amazing place Fave is, clearly. So, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you all so much for joining us. You all did a wonderful job. Lydia Mallory Madeline, Zaire, Stephen, Stefan, oh, okay, I heard it right. And I got Collins. Laney, Laney, you all were phenomenal. Thank you for sharing your experiences with your different clubs and organizations at Fave. I'm so glad that you all are having a great experience and you all are, in addition to being, you know, great students and you are a wonderful public speaker. So, thank you all for being here tonight. Our next spotlight, we will have a presentation from the Counseling Department about the RAMP certification. Please welcome Ms. Andre.
I am Diane Andre, Student Success Director, and I'm so happy to be here today with our counselors. So not fair to go after the quick. But we are really here to tell you a little bit about what's been going on in school counseling. So, back in the spring of 2020, yes, you heard that correctly, at the beginning of the pandemic, the amazing counselors in CSD entered a journey with our national organization, which is the American School Counselors Association, to bring comprehensive counseling to all students in CSD K through 12. We partnered with the American School Counselors Association with Dr. Huddleston's support. Thank you, Dr. Huddleston. And we began this journey at a really difficult time, but we really knew that this was the right thing to do for our students because we had an opportunity through a comprehensive, data-driven program to impact student achievement, attendance, and discipline. So, the ACTA model, again, we look at data. We look at lots of data and I could not continue without speaking to Nicole Burke, who was an incredible partner. Dr. Jones, who is here with us tonight, our lead counselor, has worked with him so many times in order to be able to get our school counselors the data that they need. Not only to look at, you know, the discipline data that we all are looking at and, but really to look at outcome data and to really help us to dive deep into it to see where we can make an impact on students. Tonight, our schools are going to be showing you how they systemically have attacked some of the concerns that they have for their students in their individual schools. And the great thing about this is it made us as a district, with Dr. Jones's, she really did take the lead, to help us to look developmentally, K through 12, were we delivering a program that was going to help get our students college and career-ready? And so, we are working together as a group, just like our teachers, to really make sure in their time that we are doing programming that will have results in improvement in student achievement, attendance, and discipline. So, RAMP means it's a recognized ACTA, which is our, the American School Counselor Association, a recognized ACTA model program. And while RAMP was not the actual goal, comprehensive counseling is the goal for every student in CSD. RAMP is optional, but RAMP, when you go for this award, everything that we have been doing to improve our programming to this point, really led us to be in a prime position to go ahead and do this. And what does it say? It says, "You're the best of the best." Only 1,200 schools in the nation have been given a RAMP designation. And as a RAMP reviewer, I can tell you that over 3,000 have applied. It is a rigorous process by a very defined rubric. And so, our counselors are coming up so they can share with you what they have been doing, particularly in the areas of intervention, in order to make an impact. What we look for is improvement and what we look for is to see if the interventions that we're making are making a difference to students. So, first up is the wonderful Precious McGee from Oakhurst Elementary.
Again, my name is Precious McGee. I'm the counselor at Oakhurst. This is my second year in CSD and my 19th year as a counselor. So, while I am super comfortable in my role, I'm not super comfortable presenting to adults until a kid walks out. I was like, wait a minute. It's like, you know, I know people for eye contact. So, here we go. I'm just going to jump right in. So, at Oakhurst, the goal was by the end of the 2021, 2022 school year, second grade students who identify as Black and scored below average on the fall Math Math Assessment will decrease by the number of students who scored below average on the spring Math Math Assessment by 43%. So, that's from nine students below average to two. Reasons being, this aligns with the district and school goal and the history of Black students underperforming in math. So, those are one of my two main reasons for kind of targeting this goal. And strategies that I used to implement it were classroom lessons on coping skills slash helpful thinking to the entire second grade. And then I did a small group sessions on coping skills slash helpful thinking with nine underperforming second grade Black students. It ended up actually being eight because I moved. Parent newsletter about math anxiety and ways to help their child reduce anxiety. Counselor, teacher, administrator, kid talk regarding addressing student needs and refer students to in-school and/or community resources. So, those are my strategies to target that goal. Here are the results from my classroom mindset and behaviors assessment data on coping skills. One of the interventions I did. The assessment data question to the students was, "I can identify helpful versus unhelpful thinking." And what I did was a, was something called, because they're young, so written assessments are very hard, we did something called a fifth to four. So, they would show me, you know, a fifth is not at all. One is sometimes, two is often, three all the time, and four, I could teach it to someone else. And so, you see that the average during the pre-assessment was 2.4, which is kind of between often and all the time. And the post-test was in between three and four with a 3.4, which was in between all the time and I could teach it to someone else. So, there was growth in that mindset. Now, the closing, the gap mindset and behavior, this is a small group that I did with the eight students. And the statements were, "I am capable of doing well at math." That's huge to believe that you are capable. "I can describe the connection between my thoughts, feelings, and actions," which is rude in cognitive behavioral therapy. "I can scale the intensity of my emotions." How intense are my emotions? "I can think of helpful ways to cope with negative feelings." And you can see the pre- and post-tests, these are the ways that they answered. Somehow, on the "I can think of helpful ways," I did damage. They learned less. Now, you know, with K through two, sometimes they think they know a lot in the beginning and then when they actually learn the skills, they realize that, oh, okay, I did learn something that's true. That they did really, really well in the group. And the answers were not true, a little true, and very true. And the outcome data for the results report graph, so big data on discipline. Eighty-three ODRs off of discipline referrals down to 22 post-intervention. Now, obviously, I would love to claim all of that on my own, but we have a whole school of people working on this. But it shows that it created the atmosphere for that. For the small group, the number of students scoring below average on Math Math went from nine to seven, so it did not go from nine to two. But you can see that there were big gains in the thought, the anxiety and the thoughts, feelings, and actions part of my intervention. Great. You made it.
You did it. Next is Dr. Meg Huntington from Winona Park. Ellen.
Hi, everybody. I'm Ms. Meg Huntington from Winona Park. Been there since 2014 and a counselor since 2000. Doing this right after a global pandemic was interesting, but I think the timing was actually perfect because our kids came back. Oh, this is Westchester.
Oh. I can't tell.
I'll be back.
All right. Hi. I'm Alan Hendrick. As you can see from my shirt, I don't work at Westchester, but my wife does. She's a school counselor there. I met Helen. I'll be back with my partner to present about that. But I will do my best to represent some of the work that my wife Rebecca Seacock did over at Westchester. She targeted math readings course for first graders and she wanted to work with students that were scoring below the median level and take them up above that medium, median level on their year-end spring math scores. She did this, she had like a wide array of interventions from classroom lessons to small groups. She was consulting with teachers and parents. She created a peer helper system where older students would come down and read with younger students. And she was targeting reading skills, mostly through the Peer Helper Program, and coping skills through her lessons and small group intervention. Let's see how she did. Whoa. Hey. All right. We'll start off with the classroom lessons. She was measuring some attitudes, knowledge, and skills. She was measuring, I know how my body responds when I feel overwhelmed. I express my emotions in ways that other people understand. And I can name at least three strategies to help myself feel calm. Those are all helpful when I'm feeling overwhelmed and I can distract from our studies or our performance. And she saw growth across all those measures. And those were delivered over the course of three lessons, a lesson unit, as we say. So, that's great. And then for her more targeted small group intervention, and this was working with, oh, man, the numbers escape in my head, maybe 31 first graders that were reading below the median level. She polled four of those that felt like a good fit for this group intervention and she worked with them on coping skills and she measured their attitudes. How often do you want to read out loud to somebody else? How confident do you feel in your ability to read? And how capable do you feel taking tests? And again, was able to see growth from the pre-test to post-intervention tests, which is great. And like a typical husband I am, I know that she has talked to me about her overall outcome data or her, the math test performance, and that ran right out of my head.
We don't.
Y'all, y'all.
So, as I was saying, once the kiddos came back, we saw that you had kind of forgotten to do, really didn't know how. And so, the goal, based on the data, was to reduce the behavior referrals. We found that the majority of the behavior referrals were not, were not very serious. They were mostly just disruption and defiance. Teachers were frequently, often, almost always having to stop teaching to get people back on track and focus. Who knows all the reasons why? They had to stop in school, they had left of rank anxiety, you know. But we focused on that. And my goal was, by April 2022, all second grade students with five or more behavior referrals between August 21 to December 21 have decreased the number of referrals by 50%. And the data from WPS behavior referrals showed that the classroom disruption surprised the majority of the referrals. So, this was aligned with our school improvement plan to become ethical people, demonstrate and create the self-conflict. So, the rationale behind that was if kids can see how they are affecting their classroom, they might make better choices. As I focus on second graders, seven-year-olds aren't really adept at empathy yet. They're still learning that they function in a whole universe of people, not just themselves. So, we focused on that and hoped that the referral effect would be they made better choices. The first question was, I know the difference between empathy and compassion. Empathy being you understand the feelings, compassion being you act on it, use help. They went from a two to a three. One was no, two was kind of sort of, three pretty much, and four absolutely. And it was almost the exact same. Next one is, I know some things I can do to show compassion. So, they were asked to generate, what can you do to help someone? And that went up a lot. The next one, I appreciate my friends, they are good at that. They love their friends. They were so happy to be exactly their friends. They were reveling in all the friendships. And the last one, there was a lot of growth because they didn't know anything about it. I know what it means to be an upstander, which if they see someone getting teased or picked on at school, to step in, whether it's kind of passively and inviting them to come play at their group, or actually going and talking to the teacher. So, they did gain some knowledge after the lessons, and that was all second grade classes. And then in my group, I had these nine kids who had received five or more referrals. You could see that several of them, three went down to no more referrals. A few of them went down to one, but they definitely reduced. Two friends there on the end that went from 23 to eight, or 27 to nine. They have other things going on besides just, had a lot going on. And the empathy group, they learned a lot of ways to put themselves in other kids' shoes and to see the effect of it. Also have empathy for themselves. That is nice. Thank you.
Thank you.
So, I didn't want to leave Jonathan Blaze out. So, one of the reasons we're presenting is that in order to put in our applications to RAMP, which are due this Saturday by 11:59, we have to have presented to the board and/or one board member's signature. And thankfully, Mr. Herndon is on his advisory council. So, Glenn Wood, so we gave him a pass for tonight. He needed, he didn't have childcare. So, anyway, but he also did a great job and he targeted specifically some Black students in Math Math, looking at that as a benchmark with the goal of reducing it, the number of students who are below benchmark. He did see improvements. And one thing, if you know Jonathan Blaze at all, he is a very reflective practitioner. And so, he has gone back and has even looked further into how he can make an impact with these students. We also had discussion, he's really looking at even how we ask questions at the K2 level because as I said, you know, a lot of times they think they know something or they want to please and then they're like, oh, I really learned something, but it doesn't always look that way in the data, so. Sally, you're back.
We use, I'm going to, we need to ask those counseling teams. All right. So, our goal was third grade, we worked with both third grade and fifth grade for the purposes of RAMP. We submitted our third grade data because at the last minute, fifth grade did not participate in the end-of-the-year math testing. And so, there went the data. So, this goal was informed by our district and school improvement plans. It was designed to support CSD's goal of advancing racial equity and accelerating student learning. And so, we targeted math, math scores for the purposes of decreasing Tier Three performance and moving to Tier Two or above. We wanted to increase or decrease the number of students from nine to five, so we wanted quite as efficient as some of our other counterparts, just because, it's a lot of, lot of different reasons. We were looking for some improvement. But we decided to use a resiliency skills, small group lesson, because when you think about resiliency skills, it targets so many different underlying things that support students' overall well-being. Things like goal-setting and self-efficacy. You talk about, what are some of the other topics? Problem-solving. There's even, was even a lesson on sense of humor, safe adult, and safety and security. So, just so many things about resiliency that can lend itself to other aspects of academics. So, here were our third grade pre- and post-test scores. So, we used the same type of Likert scale that everyone else did. It was a one to four. Our questions- Our questions were across the bottom that have goals I'm working towards. I believe I can do or try or do hard things. I can bounce back from problems, roadblocks and challenges, which was one of our main focuses with resiliency. I'm comfortable asking for what I need in a kind way. I reach out to supportive people in my life when I need help. So those were all built-in things through this lesson and things that we want them to be able to do with, you know, especially constructive ways, wanting to be able to use constructive ways for asking for help and realize when you need to be able to not handle something yourself but ask for support.
Okay. Yeah. Sorry. Just give me a break. So as far as our long-term outcome data, you have our pre-intervention results on the left-hand side. Those are the winter map scores for the nine group participants. And when we said tier-three and we're trying to move people up to tier-two, that's targeting students that were scoring below the twenty-fifth percentile in math on that winter map test. And while we did not get as much growth as maybe we had hoped and we didn't move four students like we had hoped into tier-two or above, we did move two and we did see growth in these map scores across many of our participants, I believe six or seven at least. And so we're hopeful that some of that was due to some of the resiliency skills that they learned and of course also to the hardware of their teachers.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Kate Patson. I am one of the four school counselors at Beacon Hill. I'm representing the whole team tonight. They're all working very hard on their ramp application right now, as we see, actually. Okay. So for our goal, we had many goals across the grade levels. Ramp is this one that targets sixth grade African-American children or students who scored below the twenty-fifth percentile on their fall math reading assessment. And the reason that we hope to reduce it from by thirty percent. Okay. So, excuse me, the reason that we chose this goal is that our data showed an opportunity gap between African-American students and their white counterparts in math scores. But also in the D-math scores and in discipline referrals, it aligns with the district data across the board. It also aligns with our school improvement goals and the district goals. And we chose several strategies for hoping to achieve this goal. We had small group lessons with those targeted students. We did individual counseling lessons with each of those students. We did classroom lessons across six, that's eighth grade, actually, targeting test anxiety and test-taking skills. And we worked indirectly with the parents, the teachers, across the board. With our mindset and behavior data, like everyone else, we did the Likert scale. And the good news is these students can name the components of a SMART goal. That's the one that they really raised and SMART being specific, measurable, achievable, relevant and timely. And, you know, a lot of research shows that if kids can set a goal, achievement. And it looks like on the other ones that they did go down. This was taken, so maybe the last couple of weeks of school that they took this post-test and they're, you know, sixth graders. But even though they say, they showed, I can, like their knowledge went down and being able to create personal academic goals, the counselors saw that they could do it. They say, okay, maybe they can't, but they did do it and they were able to reflect upon it. They, we found that there was not the thirty percent goal, but a twelve-point-five percent decrease in the number of students who were falling below that twelve, twenty-five percentile. So three of the eight of the students performed better overall on their spring assessment, the reading math assessments. But we just checked it out of this year, which is really cool. It's six of the eight of the students done better this year in the fall than they did last year. And we're continuing this group this year. We are looking at those same students, working with them across the grade levels to stay at it, keep up the work.
The great thing is that, as they said, we're continuing to look at this data. We're getting better. We're looking at the quality of our interventions and we're really trying to see how we can make an impact. So just to tell you a little bit about the road to ramp, I mentioned it's due this Saturday and one of our sixth schools has it in. We won't find out until late January, early February whether or not they receive ramp or if they have an opportunity to make some adjustments and resubmit. The great news is that when our schools get ramped, the conference next year is right here in Atlanta. So we invite you all to join us at that fabulous black tie reception. And we are really excited. And I want to just say thank you to Dr. Huddleston for her incredible support. Thank you to Dr. Jones for her incredible leadership. And thank you to you guys for hanging in there during the pandemic. They looked at me a little sideways a couple of times, but, you know, they know it is the right work to be doing. And so we are really proud of them. So thank you for your time tonight. I did ask Dr. Herman if I could just have one more minute of the board's time because Dr. Jones and I have some very exciting news to share.
Yes.
So you may or may not know that the Georgia School Counselors Association every year holds an annual conference. And in addition to incredible opportunity for counselors across the state to come together and learn, we also recognize outstanding counselors and outstanding leaders. So unbeknownst to her, she doesn't know a thing. Dr. Jones and I nominated Dr. Lily Huddleston for administrator of the year. And we are proud to say that she has been, she has been awarded, she will be recognized in November. She will be recognized November eighth in the.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Andre and all of our counselors for all of your hard work. We are confident that you all are going to get the ramp recognition that, that our schools deserve. Congratulations, Dr. Huddleston, on your well-deserved recognition.
Have to wear that all night.
Right.
Thank you.
All right. Well, we will move along now. Do you have anyone signed up for public comment?
Yes, we have one person signed up for public comment.
Okay. So as a reminder for all speakers and members of the audience, the public comment portion of the meeting is a time for public, for the public to address the board and it is limited to district parents, students, residents, employees, businesses and organizations. The time limit for all speakers will be three minutes. Person speaking during public comment will not be permitted to yield the floor or transfer unused time to other speakers. Comments during public comments should be addressed to the board as abiding and not to individual members. Speakers should be. The chair may terminate public comments that are profane, vulgar, defamatory or disruptive. Speakers may not address confidential student or personnel matters, but may submit such concerns to the superintendent in writing. Members of the board will not address persons presenting public comment or speak to the substance of any comments made during public comment. However, a member of the administrative team will follow up with person speaking at the board meeting. Dr. Furman, will you please call our first speaker?
Yes, our speaker is John Ridley.
On the agenda, if y'all were going to talk about the senior tax exemption.
We are.
Supposed to speak before?
Yes.
My name is John Ridley. I live at two oh five Adams Street. Each one of you have all received emails from me in the past. I'd like to thank the two members of the board who responded to my emails. They were very kind and truly appreciate it, the two who have responded. I'm here because you're out of your jurisdiction. To be involved in a conversation about the school tax exemption means that you're involved in a conversation about general governance and you are not a general, you are a special purpose division of a municipal government. You are not an independent school system. You do not own the digest, have no deager taxing authority. Therefore, the relevance of your conversation or inquiries into that element of the digest is no more valid than if you were on a trajectory to, for example, to propose a moratorium on apartment building syndicator, which also affects the schools and enrollment. I could have a little more sympathy with that, your involvement. But quite frankly, you're, you're empowered by the Georgia Constitution and by statute to be involved in school educational-related activities. The digest is not within your jurisdiction. You don't issue tax bills. You don't assess property. You have no land use or planning statutory authority. Do I think that the senior tax exemption has something to do with money that's available to schools? Of course I do. But then there are a lot of other things that impacted as well. So I've had a conversation, multiple conversations with our state legislators. I was recently met with both members of the legislature whose name were on the senior tax exemption. I'm telling you now, you're going to get a very different road next time and it relates to dealing with this exemption. Out of your jurisdiction, spending money on activities that you're not authorized to do. I ask under open records request for a copy of the contract with George Set University for the senior exemption study and it's never been provided. So just telling you where I'm coming from. I am writing a series of articles about how we got here. I want to share with the community Decatur's wonderful Ray Nagin moment during the middle of the pandemic. So that's what I have to say. Thank you very much. And I would appreciate some way that the community could participate in the conversation as opposed to just a random three-minute hour.
Thank you.
No more people are signed up for public comment this evening.
Okay. Thank you, Dylan.
I sent an email and I tried to sign up, but something. So I don't know if that counts.
Come and make the public comment, please.
My name is Catherine Carter. Was born here in Decatur, lived here all my life. Lived in the same house for years, raised some kids in school and so on when I went to school here. And of course, I'm on a fixed income, teacher's retirement, social security. But I'm speaking more for my neighbor who can't be here, who is ninety years old and has lived in the same oldest house on Chandler Street for probably a hundred years. She has minimal social security. I don't know why, but she does. And for some reason, her twenty-five, thirty years teaching for the Atlanta school system, they didn't take out money for teacher's retirement. So she has the barest minimum of income. I'm mentioning her because I want you to understand that there are some people who absolutely will not be able to stay if the senior exemption is taken away. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you. All right. At this time, I will turn the agenda over to Dr. Furman to share superintendent's comments.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Several comments tonight, so bear with me. I've got quite a bit of information to share with the board this evening about our dyslexia. Where we are in the process, where we've come in the process and some of the data that we've collected as we've gone through. I'd like to update the board on the teacher burnout task force. We have launched the survey. We collected about three hundred responses from teachers around the district. Tomorrow evening, I'll meet with our teacher advisory council. We'll review those responses that have come in and we'll select at least two areas for the tax team to facilitate, looking into researching and coming up with some recommendations to present to the board, to our SCLT and to the strategic planning committee on how we can prevent teacher burnout in the long term in CSD. I also wanted to update the board that I did approve two additional school-based staff positions. One is a behavior intervention pair pro. What we've noticed is this year we are dealing with more significant student behaviors and we need more hands at our schools, more people in the buildings to help support the teachers as they're managing and learning how to appropriately respond to those behaviors. And then we've also added another special education teacher at college height. Also wanted to update the board on Wilson Center staffing. Two of the positions that were approved to hire in July, we filled those positions. One is our equity coordinator, Anthony Downer. Nope, he's not here tonight. And our other one is our communication coordinator, Paris Hardnett. And you will meet Paris next at the meeting in November when she will help facilitate the teacher of the year recognition for the board. We did also have two vacant positions that have been filled. Our behavior interventionist, Jereen Francis, is coming to us from Atlanta Public Schools. And I have to tell you, she has just hit the ground running, has done a phenomenal job supporting our teachers with some several high needs students that we've been trying to find a solution for. And then our assessment and accountability director position that was vacated when Heidi Watley transitioned to work with the Decatur Virtual Academy, has been filled by Alexis Glenn. And she also has come in to do a great job. And if you don't know Alexis Glenn, she's been serving as the eighth grade administrator, assistant principal at Beacon Hill. So she's also been doing a great job. Oh, there you are, Alexis. Didn't see you hiding back there. Welcome. I also wanted to update the board. One of the board priorities that was identified for my evaluation was to create and implement an effective management structure. And the supporting goal was that by November first, we'd have a reorganization of central office, positions to align people and processes and that this would be completed to ensure that there's accountability and responsibility in each division and that each executive has a manageable number of direct reports, including the superintendent. And as I shared last year at the end of the school year during my final evaluation, I had, I currently still have twenty direct reports and that is untenable for me to make sure I can do all the work of the superintendent plus manage and support the principals. So we are, we've made some progress in several areas here. One of the major things we've done is we've shipped nursing and COVID management to our operations team. Previously, that was under Dr. Huddleston's supervision. That has really freed her up to lean in and focus on equity and counselors and student support. The other update is we have been working for coaching and training for several of our departments to make sure that they have high, highly effective practices and procedures in place. Our finance and our HR teams have done some significant collaboration to make sure that our personnel, our, what do you call it, position control and that our payroll is working accurately. And they reported great success on that because at our last, our last payroll, it went very smoothly. So I want to thank them for their hard work on that. A new position that we are really just bringing back to the district, this is the position that I was initially hired into. We renamed it. I was hired as the executive director of schools. We renamed it because we've transitioned all of our executive director to chief names. So we wanted to keep with that theme and we will be hiring a chief of school improvement. And this person will take over supervision and support of school principals, our CSD Leadership Academy and other duties as assigned. I do want to note that the FTE for this position was repurposed from. Also, our departments have identified their key performance indicators, whether they are specific to their department or help to support the district improvement plan. I'll be reviewing those continuously with the team over the school year. And we are also taking a look at their budget. They've just got some budget comparison reports and they are looking at what are the areas that they may have some opportunities for effectiveness to find in their budget. for effectiveness to find in their budget. Um, this is going to be a bulk of the presentation is I wanted to walk the board through and any members of the public that are listening, an overview of our dyslexia pilot. So this has been a journey that started way back in May 2019. Um, back in 2019, the governor signed Senate Bill 48, which put this dyslexia, um, some requirements on schools to implement by 2024, 25. Um, then we entered into a pilot. Um, so we had our pre-pilot year, which was our planning year in 2019, 20, and then we had years one, two, and three of pilot from 19, uh, 2020 all the way to this year being our third year. Next year is kind of an implementation and prep year, and then our fully launch year would be 2024, 25. So first I want to make sure that everyone understands and particularly the board that this all started with Senate Bill 48, um, and it was signed into laws and mentioned in May 2019. And this is a bill that the governor signed. Um, and these, this, the information on this slide is strictly pertaining to what was in the bill that the governor signed to put into place by 2024, 25. So the governor said that school districts, that school districts in the state must develop policies that will refer certain elementary students for dys, um, for dyslexia screening. It says that we, the state must create dyslexia information handbook that would be supporting our school system, make sure that there's professional development opportunities on dyslexia for teachers, creating a dyslexia endorsement program for teachers, also adding instruction on how to teach students with dyslexia and interventions, um, at the college prep, uh, level, as well as making sure that schools are providing interventions for students with dyslexia in the classroom. Um, also the screening of kindergarten students, that was the initial part of the bill to screen kindergarten students to begin in 2024, 25. But then the last thing this bill called for was the creation of a pilot, asking districts to apply to be part of this pilot to implement these things and to see how it works so that by 2024, 25, other, all the rest of the districts in the state will have some recommendations and some tools to help them effectively implement these recommendations. So at the end of, uh, May, at the end of that 2018, 19 school year, CSD decided that they wanted to apply to be a part of this pilot. This is a screenshot from an informational meeting that the district attended, uh, just to get the understanding and to help clarify what the responsibilities of a pilot district would be. And those is very similar to what you saw on the previous slide, which is what was in the bill is that we, as a pilot district, would have to screen kindergarten and third grade students, all of our kindergarten or third graders for the schools that we selected. So Insidious Tools of Decatur, as you'll, as you know, we've been, are part of this pilot. We decided to do this district wide. We could have said, hey, we are only going to do this at one school, but we felt that it would be beneficial for all students. So we went ahead and did this district wide. Also, it said that we would have to provide appropriate reading interventions for students. Um, that we would, um, have to comply with all federal laws and to get permission to screen the students if they are showing indicators of, um, characteristics of dyslexia, provide the parent's information, um, and then we'd have to report our findings and data to the state as well as attend all the meetings for pilot districts. So that's what we, we went to and we decided, let's go ahead and apply. We did a survey just to see if we basically had the good building blocks to build on to be a good pilot district. Um, and we submitted our application to be a pilot district. Since 2019, in December, we were notified that we were accepted to be a pilot district. Um, and very soon after, um, we decided to request from the board, uh, about just over a half a million dollars to staff, um, to staff some positions that will help support the implementation of the pilot as well as, um, purchase programming, uh, staff development and materials so that we could implement the pilot effectively. Um, so let me see where I'm on this. So we started attending all of the pilot meetings with the DOE. Then in March, we all probably remember, we had the COVID pandemic cut our schools down. So in the midst of just gearing up and getting things ready for this pilot, a massive worldwide pandemic comes in, but this team that was working on the pilot kept focusing on making sure we would hit the deadline to get things in place for the following school year. Uh, they were researching screeners, determining what the next steps were. The board did approve the increase to the budget so that we could hire that additional personnel. Um, in May, we started gathering quotes. We started putting out options for professional development for our teachers. We had about 81 teachers sign up for that professional development. Um, we inventoried our materials, ordered what we needed, started providing professional learning. And at this time, also our previous executive director of teaching and learning, Daryl Campbell, um, decided to take a career opportunity in Washington DC. So he left the district and he had been the leader of this pilot and organizer of it. Um, and this is when we hired Dr. Beam to come in and take his place. Um, and then not surprisingly, of that 81 teachers that initially signed up for that letters training whittled down to about 12, um, which I completely understand. It was a pandemic. They were relearning how to teach, how to provide instruction virtually. It was a lot on everyone's plate. So I can imagine if it was like, hey, I gotta take something off my plate. That definitely was one thing that they could push off to a little bit later. Um, and then we also participated in an interview with the research team that was, that is going to, that is monitoring the data for the pilot. So that brings us to pilot year one, which is 2020, 2021. And if you remember how that year started, eh, we pushed back, coming back in person for a long time. I don't think all of our students were back fully in person until either the end of the first semester or the beginning of the second semester. Um, and we were still doing those alternate days, um, of students coming in on one day, staying home the next day. Um, so there was a lot of turmoil in that school year to get things up and going in a consistent way. Um, another, uh, area that in July is our reading coaches were hired. They started troubleshooting screeners because we realized the screeners we initially had selected wouldn't be able to be used because they couldn't be given virtually. Um, so that threw another wrench into our plans. Um, and then also we had to develop plans for the students that once they were flagged with characteristics of dyslexia, they would have to be in person to screen for that next level screener, the KTEA 3. Um, so we kept chugging away at things. We put Wilson Foundations in place. That's the phonics instruction program for tier one and tier two in all of our K3 classrooms. We did implement a universal screener in grades K3. Um, and then we started reviewing in September, the universal screener data, started getting consent for the additional screener. Um, October, we were still trying to troubleshoot how we would do social distancing while we do the KTEA. Um, but we made a goal to complete those, all those secondary screeners in November. We met that goal, notified parents of the results, and then we have to get permission to start doing the next steps of the program. Um, so then actually we do two sets of screeners to catch any students mid-year who maybe had flipped or students that, um, came new to our building. So we do a winter screening and go through that same process of notification, consent, and the additional screeners. Um, this is also the year in April where we have the superintendent transition. Um, and then following that, our literary coordinator, who had kind of picked up the lead of this, once our previous executive director left, she also transitioned to work for a, um, for a private company. So then that brings us to year two, which is, believe it or not, just last year. Um, so last year, um, starting in July, we started getting our teachers signed up for Orton Gillingham trainings. We started several cohorts. We also started our foundation's leadership and intervention training to get our teachers really highly skilled in providing the foundation's instruction and supporting our leaders as they observe what's happening in the classroom. Um, in September, we reviewed our universal screener data, which, um, for this year was MAP and Acadian and K, not reading and K3, and then Acadian and K2 and I Ready and Ainsweb. Thank you. Ainsweb in third grade. Um, but at this time, we also had some more teams, uh, team members. Coach left, left us to go work for a private school, a private company. Our other MTSS coordinator retired. We decided not. To see if we could create some budget savings at the time. Um, so that again caused us to do some reorganization and shifting of responsibilities and really keeping this train moving in a productive way. Uh, but we did complete the KTEA screenings. We notified parents. Um, and then October is also, um, I think Dr. Beam and her team presented at the international, with the International Dyslexia Foundation on how we were progressing with our pilot program. And I want to make sure, just a report on how we're progressing with the pilot program. November, December, we were implementing tier two and three interventions and making sure that the students were, who were qualified, um, into this, um, screening process, we were progress monitoring those students. Uh, we did another round of universal screeners in the winter in January, and again, another round of that. Consent, do the KTEAs and then provide, um, additional supports for those students. Dr. Beam, she wrote a grant and receives an additional $60,000 to provide some additional literacy readiness training for our staff, which they are working on this year. And then we hosted a dyslexia awareness presentation with Ellen Hill from the Skank School. And this is finally when Dr. Zaza transitioned to come in and help support as a second reading coach. Um, so all of that, most of the time last year, our Gail Hardwick, Dr. Gail Hardwick was doing all of this work independently. So this is still where we are. So up to this point, um, now we're in year three of the pilot program. We're continuing with Orton Gillingham training for our teachers. We've purchased a really great set of decodables that are aligned, um, with the phonics lessons that we have in our K5 schools. We've done our universal screeners for this year. Uh, we've implemented a second cohort of Orton Gillingham as well as implementing a foundation's demonstration school, which will be Glenwood Elementary, uh, which means that will be a school that people from around the nation can come and see how we implement that phonics curriculum at our school. Um, in September, last month, we started reviewing the MAP and Acadian screener data, send home those consents and go through that whole process of getting consent, running, evaluating the students with KTEA, starting to provide the increased interventions for those students. Um, that gets us to October. Uh, we're forming our dyslexia task force. Uh, we're hosting, um, uh, Skank School Dyslexia Awareness Communicate, uh, we hosted the Skank School Dyslexia Community Presentation. We've also got another event coming up later this month with Dr. Lindstrom. She is the head of the dyslexia, um, intervention programming at the state level. Um, and we're also conducting those KTEAs for students. So a couple of things that I also wanted to make sure that we had, the board was aware of, um, the universal screeners. We've had questions about what are good universal screeners? What are not appropriate universal screeners? Um, so the law says that the universal screener should test these six things, six things. Not all of those six things are found in one single assessment. Um, and that's what was shared with me and Dr. Lindstrom. Kristi, is that correct? Not one single test of all six of these? Okay, that's what I thought. Um, so you can't just do one if you're going to test all six. So we have two universal screeners, which is why we use MAP reading and the Acadian screener. Now I like the note up here because it says a screener alone cannot identify dyslexia. So what it does is it indicates whether further assessment is needed. And that's why the students who throw the flags of showing characteristics of dyslexia are invited to continue and take the KTEA screener because that really can identify those key signs of dyslexia in a student. So I wanted to share with the board, this is an example score report from MAP. Um, several times we've had some questions, is this a good screener? So this is the report that teachers get. Um, and thanks to a parent, I signed up for, um, a very interesting and informative course on early literacy and phonics and have learned a lot about how students learn how to read, how phonics instruction works. Um, and as I'm reading through, learning all of that and then looking at this report, this is giving our teachers exactly what they need when they are deciding, okay, is this student ready to move on with certain parts of phonics instruction? Is it making sure our student, is it helping us see, do these students show signs of dyslexia with the MAP, uh, universal screener? And you can see via this report that it is giving them that information. Um, and this is just a little more detail on further information. So it's that first page and this is all part of the report that the teachers have access to after students have finished their MAP assessment. This is an example. This is one school MAP data, um, because MAP, the way you pull data through the MAP interface, it's hard to get some district level data. So I just did a snapshot of one school. Um, and this school, I think, has 54 kindergarten students. And, um, what you'll see here is when we look at this data, number one, we look at the overall data, but we really want to focus in on those foundational skills because that's the phonemic awareness. Those are those core skills that will show us is the student throwing flag that they have some characteristics of dyslexia. As I mentioned, we also give the Acadian screener, and this is a list of what it, um, share, it, what it tests, um, in our students. And then I wanted to share with the board a snapshot of our initial Acadian screener data. So all of the students universally, every kindergartner, every first, second, and third grader, third grade took Acadian? No, they took Ainsweb. Yes. First, second, kindergarten, first and second took Acadian. Um, and this is their score report. So if it's green, it means those students are performing at or above the benchmark. If it is yellow, they are below the benchmark, but, um, you'll see that it says they're going to need strategic support. Um, and then if it's well below the benchmark, that's the red, and that shows us those kids that are going to need that intensive support. Um, so if you, you'll see, our kids come in and I think we're getting the results that you would anticipate nationwide, like the percent of students showing some signs of dyslexia, I would say is representative of what we would expect. Um, but you can see that they come in, we come in pretty, pretty strong to begin with. First grade is always our lowest and we're not really sure why that is. Um, but that, this is one of the, first grade is really where we see some big changes in our data. And then this is our second grade data. Other thing I wanted to share is now that we've completed, I don't have year three screener data yet, but for year one of the pilot, we did use STAR early literacy. And remember this is we were. Best tool to use, um, because we were virtual. So we used STAR early literacy and DIBL's K2, third grade STAR reading and I Ready. Um, and the blue bar shows us how many students were flagged at each school as showing signs for dyslexia that would be referred for additional assessment. And of those, and let's just look at Claremont, of those 15 students that showed characteristics of dyslexia, all but three of them were already receiving some kind of an additional support, whether it be through EIP, um, the MTSS program, ESOL support, or special education services. So the screener is doing its job. It's, so it's helping us find those students who were not getting the support that they needed, um, which is great. Uh, but you would see, we're still missing some students. So how do we make sure we fix that? It's through continuing with universal screeners, providing interventions and tracking that data. And this is year two of the pilot. You can see we caught more students in the screener, but most of those students overall were already receiving support. So those students that have, and I haven't, we haven't finished collecting our longitudinal data yet, which we will collect and share, will, um, you'll see, like, did those students master what they needed to, were able to move on their own without additional support? Or were those students still throwing, um, showing characteristics of dyslexia through the screeners? Um, and just to clarify, the second year, we did change our universal screeners to MAP reading in third grade with a K, in K2, Acadian and MAP reading, and then third grade is MAP reading and I Ready. So all that to say, where are we going? We've got this data. We've got really good information to look at. We know our students are showing characteristics of dyslexia, but we've got interventions in place. So now it's time to say, are those interventions working? Let's look at the data. Um, so we're going to continue with implementation of the pilot. We're going to collect and analyze that data longitudinally. We'll have a good two and a half years of data to look at. Um, we've also initiated the task, task force, which will help us look at that data and make some decisions on what to do going forward. Um, so the task force is parents and staff members, um, as well as Dr. Lindstrom from the state is agreed to participate on this task force with us. Um, so they're going to look at the expectations from the state, what was asked of us for the pilot, did we implement the pilot well? Um, and then what improvements would they recommend to improve our program to help students with dyslexia, also identifying what information do our parents need, what training and resources do our teachers need, as well as developing recommendations to share with the strategic planning and the board for what we can do long-term to make sure that we're continuously supporting students with dyslexia with what they need. Um, and then finally, later this year, we'll be developing that implementation plan for what we will do going forward and get, make sure that is all into place for that full launch in 2024, 25. Um, so that's a dyslexia update. Board, did you want to have any questions on that before I move on to the last couple of things?
Uh, so I just wanted to confirm, all K to three students are being screened now?
Yes.
Right, which is, which is great. When, when, excuse me, sorry about that. When, uh, when will all, I guess, K3 or K5 teachers have received all of the OG training? We have, is that this year, is that?
So OG training isn't, I don't, I mean, first of all, K5 is, um, we're only screening K3. Um, K5 teachers, yes, OG training could be helpful for fourth and fifth grade teachers. I don't know that I would say that full Orton Gillingham training is needed for teachers in that. I would say your intervention teachers definitely need that intense training in Orton Gillingham. I would say all of our teachers will be, have. I would say all of our teachers will be, are taking this year a 10-hour course on the science of reading so they know what effective, what science of reading is all about, how to approach teaching students phonics, how to approach understanding of phonemic awareness. And once they've had that course, they will continue training through foundations and the Wilsons' foundations program so that they will be able to provide excellent phonics instruction for every student. I don't know that I would say every teacher needs Orton-Gillingham training.
And then could we take a look at the two slides on the universal results?
Oh, wrongly.
Yes, those two. So I did, I wanted to take a look at this for just a second. I mean, as I'm, as I'm reading this, it's year one, right? So year one, this data to me gives credence to what we've heard some of the parents come here and say. That kids were being missed, you know, in some of the schools, up to 30% of the kids that probably needed an intervention were, were being missed, presumably prior to us doing all of this work, right? Which I, which I think gives credence to some of the frustration that we've heard with some of the parents. But if you take a look at year two, after we did this, I mean, this is, this is great news. It appears that we are in fact accurately identifying the kids that really need that. And so, so while, while I want to make sure we give credence to the parents that have felt this frustration, I also want to give credit to the administration for the results that we're, we're seeing here. It does appear that we are actually identifying the kids correctly that need this heightened level of intervention. Obviously, you know, let's hope these interventions work. We pay attention very closely to those results. But I view this slide in particular as, as extremely good news. So, so thank you to everybody for, for making that happen.
One quick question. I, I agree. It shows that the, the screening process does work. How do we account for the kids whose parents have had private testing? So we have some kids that have intervention that come into the system that have bypassed this because their parents were suspicious or the pediatrician was suspicious or something like that. So they're not, they're just not in that cohort. So we're, but they may jump into the pool of kids that are getting intervention. So how do we, how do we account for them in a, because they're, they're going to be in the measure of how the program is performing, but they're not in this initial?
Depends on their grade. Because these students, this is universal screening, K-3.
Okay.
K-3, no, K-3, K-2 at the lower, but they also do the universal screening for dyslexia students at third grade. So if they're in kindergarten, first grade, second grade, or third grade within the last two years, they will have been screened, even if their parents didn't have them take a private evaluation.
So the follow-up question to that is, do we have, or are we keeping track of kids that we may have missed, but then the parents were like, well, I don't know if I believe that. And then they go get a private evaluation, and the private evaluation confirms it. Is there any way to, because then, then they will also fall out of that group. You see what I'm saying, they may?
Well, they'll get screened every time. So they get screened twice a year. So even if they've, whether they are getting intervention, whether they're been screened or not, as long as they're a student in our building, they're getting screened twice a year.
Even if they have a private evaluation that they'll get screened again?
Universal screening, we screen every student twice a year.
Even if they have a confirmed diagnosis, they'll get screened again?
Yep, yes. Because many of these students are already receiving special education. So part of our pilot is a whole additional layer to how we provide the interventions for students that already have special education. Any other questions on dyslexia?
It's a, maybe the different version of that, which is, we hear, my child isn't going to show up in the screener because it's great personal call to the effort. We are giving them out of the screening because we're training them. And I hired a tutor, and I'm spending so much money to do that. Or I'm leaving and I'm going to private school because, you know, they did it. And my pediatrician says that they have dyslexia, but the screener says they don't. Or the screener says they don't fail. Is that, is it task force's job to kind of discuss that? Are we already discussing that? I mean, that's the question that we hear.
I think that will come under the role of the task force and looking at what are recommendations going forward. I mean, that's definitely a question they could bring up and say, hey, if we've been implementing this fidelity, the pilot, now we've got to take it from pilot to full implementation. What are some of those changes that they may recommend we put in?
And then my years worked up at the state level educator being involved. Because a lot of times, I've taken some flack and some conversation about this. It requires a child to, you know, have academic consequences from the set of abilities that fall into this, as opposed to others where it doesn't require that you do it. Blindness is always the example they use. When I went through training, where if you're blind, you get intervention no matter what. And then there's a whole nother classification of abilities that, okay, you have it, but you're also sort of failing, or it's starting to impact your grades. And that's, is there any discussion of the way we could impact the way that that's defined? Or the way, I know that the state?
Well, we've got to follow the state and federal regulations when it comes to evaluating and finding students eligible for special education services, as well as the MTSS process. But part of the universal screening process is catching those students in different areas, whether it be math or reading, you know, lots of different areas. We've just started a behavior intervention screener as well. So, I mean, the parents can get a private evaluation. Anytime a parent gets a private evaluation, I would encourage them to bring it to the school, to review it with the staff, and to say, hey, here's what is coming up in the private eval. What are you seeing? How can we work together to support the learning needs that I'm seeing at home? I'm providing all these additional services. How can we work together to see what else can happen at the school building?
Sure. I'd be interested, you know, if the task force does look at students who are identified through, you know, a private evaluation. What is the differences between the private evaluations and the, the screeners that we are giving? Like, I'd be interested, interested in learning that.
So the screeners we give are really short assessments. They're meant to be quick, short assessments, so you can give them to every kid and not lose a lot of instructional time. That's why they're, you look for indicators, you set some thresholds. If students aren't meeting those benchmarks that you want them to meet, then they get referred for additional testing, additional support, so that you can assess, are we getting all that, you know, are we getting all the information we need about this student's performance profile? So yeah, universal screener is not going to give you the in-depth. It's just that quick screener to help show if stuff, if you're throwing up signs, or shouldn't say throwing up signs. But if you're demonstrating characteristics of certain disabilities, that would help you determine that. But also academic performance. If a student is not doing well in class, the teachers are going to meet, review the student's progress. They're going to provide support and interventions. They're going to monitor that student's progress. If that student's not making progress over time, they're going to increase more interventions, provide more support, continue that progress. And to a point where, now sometimes it can take a couple, you know, 12 to 16 weeks, but it's always about supporting the child with what they need and trying to provide them that support in the least restrictive environment. And those rules are in place for a reason, so that we don't over-identify students of certain student groups. All right. I wanted to give the board a brief update on strategic planning. As I shared in the follow-up, we've completed our community engagement input session. We've reviewed the data from that. We are finalizing the members of our planning team, half of which have to be school, base staff, CSD staff. The other half will be students and community leaders. The planning team is going to meet October 25th. They'll set the really big goals that will drive the strategic plan for the next five years. And then on top of that, I've added three town hall meetings. I haven't put them yet up on the graphic, but we'll be sharing more information about those dates. We're going to put signs throughout the community to make sure everyone is aware we're building our strategic plan. We want their input. We welcome their input on helping inform what happens next in city schools of Decatur. At those town halls, I'll review the whole process, where we've been, what we're doing, where we are, and get some of their input as well on what they think needs to happen as we look at setting these goals. Then in November, we'll take all of that information, review it with our action only people that work for the system, because they take what's happening and build a plan to implement so that we can meet those goals. And then throughout this, we'll be providing updates to our community and to the board. In March and April, in February, March, the action team will be sharing their final plans with the board, getting final rounds of feedback, and hopefully we'll get board approval as designated on March 14th. You'll notice strategic planning is highlighted in TBD dates. As we were planning out our timeline, at the end of last year, we looked at the website for the DOE, and it said that you have to put your stuff in for approval 60 days prior to the expiration of your charter. Since then, we got clarification from the State Charter Foundation that recommends, because our charter is due to expire at the end of June, we need to get our charter renewal application submitted to the state by no later than the end of January. So we're working on an updated timeline. We still should be able to get everything approved and all the rounds of input that we would want because we're building it off of what the input we're getting on October 25th. So I don't anticipate any issues on getting it ready by the end of January, but it is something we do need to adjust the timeline on that. I wanted to make sure the board was aware of that. Policy revision, the other huge initiative we've been working on. I'm happy to say we're making great progress on that. As we've been reworking this model, we've already done some batch adoption of some operational policies. And we have more on the agenda for this evening. And we'll, the board will keep seeing some big batches of policies to be approved up through January. But very excited that at our last work session, we made some really good groundwork on our theory of action that we'll look at again tonight, and that the board selected to draft some reform policies that I think are going to really impact what will happen in city schools of Decatur in the, to the future. So the board has selected to draft an equity policy and a teaching of controversial topics that will support the work of our equity initiatives, not just for today and tomorrow, but for years to come. So I think we're really setting the stage as a school system on what it means to do work the right way and putting students in equity first and foremost in all of our decisions. I wanted to start doing this. I'm going to quickly go through this. The staff that work at Wilson Center have amazing skills and do great work. So I want to highlight the work that they are doing with the board. So it'll get shorter because I haven't done this, but every month, I want to update the board and give you some highlights on the hard work and the things that this group is accomplishing as a team. So Equity and Student Services, they bit the bullet and they implemented Bark, and that was huge. It was a big process. It is a way to support our students and to early identify any students that may be having suicidal thoughts, thinking about doing things that are not appropriate. It picks up those, sends an indicator, sends the flag up to say, hey, this student may be in need of an intervention. And that has been working really well. And I want to commend Dr. Huddleston and her team and the schools for implementing that. That was a lot of work. Dr. Huddleston's team also led a comprehensive school threat assessment guidelines training, which is also really helping our schools be very, very safe. I was in an interview with an admin team and a student. And to hear the administrator lead the threat assessment was so powerful to make sure the student was safe, to make sure that his friends were safe, to make sure that he was not going to be a threat to anyone in the future. It was really powerful to hear that process. We also have trained all of our assistant principals on good procedures to use when they are thinking about, is this the student that we may have to take to a hearing to make sure that we are following due process and doing what's right for the student at the start? Our information systems, Esten and his team have also done loads and loads of work. What's the FA?
Fifth Avenue.
Good afternoon. They did a refresh of all the student devices at Fifth Avenue. And they've done some simplification and consolidation of student life cycles and making sure that we're replacing devices as needed. They've got 24-hour online learning tools that have been set up to make sure that everything was ready that day before school started for our students and staff. Amazing to me how much easier it is for me to send stuff to the copiers, so really kudos. Except the PIN, the PIN I always have to look up before I run to make a paper copy. But it has been really helpful to monitor all of our copying and printing. It's been much more streamlined, so much appreciated there. Some backup power supplies have been provided. The grade book has launched. Yeah, we know we've got some hiccups and some potholes with that, but we have a grade book that every parent has access to, to see grades all the time. Is it where we want it to be yet? No, but we're working on it, and we've taken a big first leap. Esten also completed his courageous conversations about RACE affiliate practitioner program. So huge kudos to Esten for completing that. And implementing lots of new cybersecurity tools to make sure that we are monitoring outside threats and making sure we're working on anti-fishing. I don't know, the board, you will see emails that are like, "Board, phishing alert." Do you see those? They come in, it means we've prevented phishing from coming to the board inbox. Yeah. Human Resources, they have placed over 25 student teachers in our schools this first semester, which is huge. They've done their first 30-day check-in. Deena has started a 30, 60, 90-day check-in with new staff and is getting lots of attention from other HR chiefs across the state on how she's doing that. So really good there, way to support our new staff and make sure that they feel supported in our school system. And also this year, started an HR pop-up at all the schools, just to be onsite and help answer questions that the staff have at the building. And then just for onboarding numbers, 30 new substitutes were on-boarded and 100 new staff or transfers, people that moved from location to location. Finance, Ms. Broom has worked really hard. It's a huge effort, and I didn't realize how hard it was to close a budget and get everything submitted to the state, but she got all that in on time, so thank you for that. And is hard at work on getting all the books closed out for our audit. Operations, Sergio is not here tonight, he's coming back from a conference, but we got our lead certification for Tally, which is huge. He also got a $61,000 grant to help support additional safety initiatives in our schools. And he got the final check from the DOE on what they owed us for Tally Street. So I don't have the number in front of me, but it was a pretty close to Sergio on that. Last group here, state and federal programs. This is a huge accomplishment for Frances and her team. The state approved our MOE, which is Maintenance of Effort. So if you decrease spending in your special education programs too significantly for one year to one year, Frances helped me, I guess it's wrong, you basically have to pay the state back. So she was able to create all the documentation, make the correct justification for that, and saved, expected savings for the district on that is over $200,000. So thank you, Frances, great work there. The IDEA and the ESOL federal programming held their first parent engagement meeting. It was here the other night, they did smores. It was really cute and very, very well attended. So I thought that was a great event. And we've got our ESOL endorsement program up and going, and our teachers are learning how to help support our students that are coming in as second language learners. And believe it or not, we have a lot more ESOL students coming in, particularly students that have no English proficiency, speak zero English at all. So we've seen those numbers increase. Courtney's department, Communication and Government Relations. She's been implementing new websites and has got that up for the district site, as well as half of the schools have implemented their new design. Courtney's also been working with three Career Academy interns. So you'll start seeing some really great graphics and information coming that are designed by students. And I think that's been really, really cool to see. And also a culturally responsive book project. And then Courtney's also been working with her department on making sure all of our leases are up to date and doing residency verification. Teaching and learning, you're going to hear a lot more from this department when they come and talk about the quarter one dip. But a huge, huge thing here, they did their first fall intercession. Kudos to Erica for leading that and getting those kids in over fall break that needed additional presentation of our core curriculum, which is our reading curriculum, that science of reading, that's the SOR 10-hour course. And then our universal screeners have been given for all students in kindergarten through 12th grade. And that concludes my comments for this evening. Good afternoon.
Thank you. Dr. Furman, I just wanted to clarify for anyone that might be listening. When you said the first quarter dip, it is not a decline in the first quarter in any way. It means district improvement, Claire.
Thank you. I appreciate that, Han.
I had a question, Dr. Furman.
Yeah.
The DOE payment for Tally.
Yes. What, what, what is that for? So when you build a school, they, there's monies that the state will pay you back for. And then you have to submit all the paperwork to get the refund from the state. Well, there was some back and forths and back and forth. I'll get the final number. I tried to look through it in my notes at my meetings with Sergio, but I couldn't find it. But that was finally able to get some back and forth. But he got everything submitted, and we got refunded every penny.
Oh, good. Okay.
What'd you say, Lani? 2.4 million.
Oh, that's significant.
Yes. Thank you.
Thank you.
He's probably texting Lani. Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Well, if there are no other questions, I'll move on to the chair's comments. I want to thank all of the community stakeholders who participated in the community engagement session for the superintendent search that was held on September 28th. The Georgia School Board Association will conduct a virtual The Georgia School Board Association will conduct a virtual community input meeting via Zoom on October 24th from 6:00 to 7:30. So please be on the lookout for a Zoom link, which will be shared with the community soon. On September 29th, I had the pleasure of participating in the. Beacon Hill Middle School. Say that it was an awesome and inspiring experience is an understatement. Beacon Hill's orchestra was outstanding. Harley Davis and Said Abdiqadir were emcees extraordinaire, whose warmth and humor set the stage for the entire program. And then there was Mercy Holt's eloquent delivery of the poem Beacon Hill, written by my former co-teacher, Beacon Hill's very talented Ms. Suzie Plisca. During the ribbon cutting, I shared how the event was a full circle moment for me as a former Renfro teacher, who along with my former colleagues in 2015, produced the first production of Renfro's Black History Month play titled, "Re-Remember Beacon Hill: Stories of History, Hope, and the Legacy of Elizabeth Wilson," which was written by my husband, Attorney Molly Davis. But it filled me with great pride to be able to tell that day Mayor Emerita Elizabeth Wilson that now every student who walks through the doors of Beacon Hill Middle School will not only remember the Beacon Hill community, but they will also uphold its rich legacy of hard work and excellence. Thank you to Principal Derek Thomas for organizing such a memorable event. The board participated in a productive and informative board norms training on September 30th. We still have a few tweaks to make to our board norms and once those are finished, the board norms will be shared with the community on CSE's website. Later that evening on the 30th, I attended Decatur High's homecoming game. Congratulations to the Bulldogs on the exciting win and congratulations to Decatur's 2022 Homecoming Court. October is National Principals Month and I would like to take this opportunity to express my gratitude for CSE's outstanding principals. These individuals do a tremendous job of supporting their staff and have a significant impact on the success and well-being of their students. Thank you, principals, for all that you do. This week is National School Lunch Week and I would like to give a shout out to the CSE nutrition staff. These individuals work very hard to ensure that our students are offered healthy and delicious meals. Our schools would not be successful without these caring employees. Also, congratulations to School Nutrition Director Tiffany Lawrence and the entire school nutrition team for winning the Golden Radish Award. This award from the Georgia Department of Education School Nutrition Department recognizes excellence in farm-to-school. Way to go, CSE nutrition team. Relations to our staff on achieving an outstanding graduation rate of 96.6%. The class of 2022 was among the largest graduating classes in Decatur High School history. The Georgia Department of Education announced graduation rates last week and the state's rates for 2022 is 84.1. Good work, CSE. Congratulations to our DHS students for once again helping CSE to lead the state in SAT scores. Overall, CSE ranked number one as a district on the SAT and out of 490 schools, DHS ranked number 13 with a score of 1196. Congratulations, students, on all of your hard work. And then finally, congratulations to our operations and facilities team and the Tally team for receiving the LEED certification that Dr. Furman just mentioned for Tally Street Upper Elementary. The LEED Building Certification Program is an initiative of the U.S. Green Building Council or USGBC. LEED stands for Leadership in Energy and Environmental Design and it encourages a more sustainable approach to how buildings are designed, constructed, and operated. So way to go to our operations and facilities team. That concludes my chair's comments for this evening.
Ask what, was it silver, gold? What level did we get? The LEED certification for Tally? That's probably a true.
He just said LEEDs. I was like, I didn't know there was different.
All right. Any other questions? Okay. We will now move on to our consent agenda items, which include personnel reports, school nutrition, and monthly financial reports. Is there a motion to approve the consent items one through three?
Motion to approve consent items one through three.
Thank you. May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. The consent agenda items one to three are approved. The board has several discussion and action items on the agenda for this evening. Dr. Furman, would you please present the agenda items for action and/or discussion at this time?
Okay, so we are going to share our presentation for the board and update them on the first quarter of our district improvement plan implementation. This plan has been a collaborative effort between many individuals here at Wilson Center. I want to thank Dr. Huddleston, Dr. Banks, Dr. Beam, Ms. Simons, Ms. Godfrey, Ms. Gibbons, and Ms. Dunn. I think I got everyone and Ms. Blinn for all their work on putting this presentation together. We have several of them will be helping present this tonight, so if you want to come up to the front row, we'll go ahead and get the presentation up and get started. Thank you. Okay. So while they transition, I'll go through just some initial information here. So last bring, go ahead to the next slide, Esten. I shared this graphic with the board and this graphic is an envisioning of, a re-envisioning of how we will achieve equitable outcomes for students. And in this graphic, we've placed our framework, or our why, at the center of what we do and it's surrounded by four strategic initiatives, which all encompass our work through our DO4 framework, also known as culturally relevant practice, or culturally responsive practice. And we believe that these four strategic initiatives will help City Schools of Decatur make our, reach our goal of equitable outcomes for students. These four areas are the core of what we do as a school system. It's what we teach, it's how we teach it, it's what supports are in place for our staff and students so that they can achieve equitable outcomes for students. And later in this presentation, you'll hear more details from the team on what work has been done in these areas. Go ahead, Esten. So as we update the board each quarter, we'll be reviewing our phases of implementation. So we'll talk through the research that we've done to select what are the specific things we're going to do in these four core strategic initiative areas, how we're going to move the work forward. We'll design the process, we'll design what the implementation looks like, how we're going to roll out the strategy, what are the solutions, what are the options to make sure that we've got something that meets the needs of City Schools of Decatur. We'll also be investing and that's when we determine how much time do we need to make this implementation? How much planning does there need to be? How much funding, additional personnel? So once we get through the invest, then we'll decide on implementation. And sometimes it may be a small group of implementations, something at one school doing a pilot, and other times it may be something we roll out district-wide. And then once we get through implementation, we kind of mark it off complete, but it's not really complete because we continue to monitor the outcomes of these initiatives that we have going on across the district. So at every quarter, we will give a highlight of where we are with the strategic initiatives and in relation to what phases of implementation we are with these different, as it relates to the phases of implementation. And then highlighting specifically, what are some of those big things that are happening in the district, things, big things that we've completed that we want to celebrate, things that we're getting ready to roll out of the district, and things that we've got in the hopper to still look and research and figure out, is this something that's going to work for CSE? Okay, Esten, go ahead. So the board had set goals for the superintendent through my evaluation tool, but also included in this are goals for the district improvement plan. And these goals can be divided up into four areas. First of all, some overall academic achievement goals. And these goals are about increasing the percent of students in grades K8 that reach their predicted growth score on MAP. Want to see that increase by 10% in all student groups, so not just overall, but for our students, our black students, our females, our males, our Hispanic students. We want to see that increase. And then we also want to see the percent of students graduating in four years increasing by 1%. That might sound like a small number, but when we're already up at 96 point something, we can only really make some small incremental changes, but we want to get to 100%. The other three areas are more specific and catered really to our work as it pertains to equity and building a positive culture and climate in our buildings. So one of our goal areas is eliminating disproportionate academic and discipline outcomes for students. So the goals in this area pertain to decreasing the number of black students scoring in the lowest level of achievement, but also the percentage and number of students, of black students performing in the highest levels of achievement on the GMAT, on their math scores. But then we also want to, for discipline, decrease the number of black students that are suspended from schools by 10%. Our second area is related to improvements in student mental health, well-being, and engagement. And here we're looking to de, a 10% decrease of the number of students that are missing 10 or more days in all of our student groups. And then we also, on our Georgia Health Survey, we want to make sure that we have a 10% increase on the following constructs or areas, overall mental health, school connectedness. And then there's two specific questions that help identify, do students have a positive relationship with at least one adult in a building? And we want to see the response on that improve as well. And then our last category is, really highlights our work on equity. Again, and it's about maintaining a positive culture and climate that is inclusive and does not reinforce or increase marginalization of any group. And here we use to measure that our DEI survey that we administer once a year. And we want to see a .15 increase in this, it's called From the Group of Educational Elements, their DEI survey, in the following categories. And Dr. Huddleston will talk more through those as she shares some of the data. And then we also want to see 10% more of our staff and students will report an overall positive experience on these climate surveys. So those are our big goal areas. Go ahead to the next slide, Esten. So we've, for the sake of time, I'm just going to, we'll share all of this information the board has. We're not going to talk through each of these bar graphs. Dr. Huddleston's going to talk through some of the newer data that we've shared and what that data looks like. But so the board, you know that you've got the baseline data, we'll be posting this online. And I know that the board really is concerned about accuracy and transparency. So as we post this information online, we will link the databases and the sources where this data, as well as explanations on how this data was calculated, particularly for the areas that Dr. Huddleston is going to share. Because it's a, you've got to transition it from words to numbers, which is sometimes a little more difficult. So go to the next slide, Esten and Dr. Huddleston.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
I'm going to present without my tiara on. So as you're aware, you have been doing such a wonderful job supporting our mental health work and you've heard some of the information that the counselors presented. So we want to be able to look at how we are doing and how we're progressing with our work with regards to mental health. So we'll take a look at a couple of different parts of the Georgia School Health Survey. So there are, there's the mental health composite score, the school connectedness score as well. And so this shows our scores, the baseline from 2022. And our goal in these areas is to see an increase in these, or by 10% in these composite areas. And then there are two items that we also had on our district improvement plan last year, which was to make sure that each student has an adult that they're connecting with at school. So that item is in the survey for elementary and secondary. And so we'll continue to follow that specific item. And we'll also be looking to see at the next time it's given, if that goes up by 10%. We're going to be able to disaggregate that data based on race and gender and to see if there are any differences or any specific outreach that we need to do with respect to that. So at the bottom, you'll see the school climate composite scores. And these are scores that we have, that we cleaned from our internal survey on school climate, and that goes to students and staff members. And so here's the baseline information from 2022. And so we are looking to see that, those scores increase by 10% as well. So next, I'll share a little bit of the data from our Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion survey. And as Dr. Furman mentioned, this is a part of the tripod surveys that we administer to students and staff members, as well as families. So here we have the data disaggregated from last year. And our goal is to see the diversity, equity, and inclusion composite increase by .15. And then the last two, we're looking for a decrease by .15 and that will be in the frequency of everyday discrimination by students and the frequency of everyday discrimination by teacher. So these are some numbers that we'll be watching and really looking at the impact of our racial equity work.
Thank you, Dr. Huddleston. I think Dr. Banks.
I have a quick question.
Oh.
Is that right? I was just going on the school climate that I know you mentioned you can disaggregate the student data. Can we also disaggregate the teacher's data by race? And we'll be tracking that as well, obviously, because, yeah, I mean, obviously, we want to ensure that we support our teachers of color as well, not just equity, obviously. So great, my pleasure.
We will. Thank you. Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
The first of the four strategic initiatives we will discuss this evening is special growth. This area is all about providing high-quality differentiated training for every staff member in CSE. In this area, we engage in learning, action, and growth related to personal racial identity, anti-racism, and bias. We establish relationships and collaborate with families, caretakers, and local communities. We identify how personal cultural lenses influence perceptions of students and eliminate deficit perspectives, and we work to develop cultural humility. The items listed in the first red research and design area are there, not because we haven't started them, but instead because they are in a cycle of continuous improvement. As a result, I will briefly discuss some of them instead in the invest and implement section in the middle there in the green. Some activities I'd like to highlight there. We have a, well, research, employee research groups, I'm sorry, employee resource groups keep employees employed. They keep them with the district, they keep them having a place to express the things that they're going through and the experiences that they're having. And I'm happy to report, we have an Asian ERG, a black ERG, and a white ERG that are working right now. I'm not as pleased with our white ERG, but we're working on them. We're working on them. We're getting them together. Also, the Equity Newsletter, we have initiated an Equity Newsletter in order to give information to the entire district, both about equity, but also about what's happening in equity and what, just some valuable resources that people can access. And this is for everyone in CSE, not just teachers. Equity E-Teams, which we call E-Teams. These teams are made up of awesome administrators, teachers, and staff who have volunteered to help CSE pay our education debt. There's an active E-Team at each school in the CSE system and one at the district office. The vision of E-Teams is to pay the education debt in CSE through EMOJA, which is Unity, and YJMA, which is collective work and responsibility. The E-Team's mission is cross-district implementation of the Equity Action Plan, which asks to normalize, organize, organize and operationalize equity, thus creating the environment for equitable student and staff outcomes district-wide. All schools are doing targeted work to meet E-Team goals and responsibilities, and their goals and responsibilities are to engage in self-development, develop their leadership competencies, but also coach CSE stakeholders, which mean their peers and parents and students, around issues related to equity, anti-racism, and inclusion. They use data to review, discuss, and strategize actions to eliminate inequitable student and staff outcomes, and they serve as role model equity leaders across the district. In the complete area, you will see several items, but the one I'd like to highlight and take a moment to do a happy dance over. In the hiring of Anthony Downers, our Equity Coordinator, one of the major roles that he plays is guiding the intensive work with each school's E-Team throughout the year. That's what we really brought him here for, to do that really on-the-ground work with the E-Teams, making sure that they are, the work proceeds is consistent across all schools. The final strategic, oh, no, that's it. I'm done.
Thank you. All right. Thank you. Next slide, Esten. And next up, I believe, is Simon.
Good evening, board. How are you all doing? Good. Okay, the initiative that I will address is the Standards Plus portion of the City Schools of Decatur Framework of Equitable Outcomes that ensures we teach our students rigorous content that elevates marginalized voices. CSE provides an academically challenging environment that aligns with and enhances the Georgia standards of excellence. the Georgia Standards of Excellence through all of the standards and content areas. We implement anti-racist assessment practices. We draw on the culture to shape the curriculum. We use real-world issues as the key focus of curricular content through the connection to the CSD instructional framework. Based on the research and design phase for the strategic initiatives, we are continuously designing culturally responsive administration and instructional coach professional development based on the Do4 framework topics: self, the student, instruction, and curriculum and assessment. Currently, instructional leaders are conducting research and designing a social studies and science K2 curriculum review. District reading coaches, a building instructional coach, and the master education intervention practitioner are being mentored by a Wilson Language Training Literacy Specialist in partnership with Glenwood Elementary, as they develop a foundation demonstration site school for our district. Structures are also being created for secondary English vertical alignment. Based on the investment and the implementation phase for the strategic initiatives, we are in the midst of a recalibration of the IB Middle Years Program for Fidelity of Implementation. There is ongoing support for the IB Career Program and Diploma Program and preparation for the IB 2023 through 24 Evaluation Year. This is a daily, there's, pardon me, there is a daily implementation of the new math pathways and standards. This academic year, CSD introduced standard-based grading and a grade book. District-wide, all reading teachers and administrators are currently participating in the Science of Reading Training. We launched the second cohort of letters training, and CSD is hosting its fourth cohort of Orton-Gillingham training for our teachers. Lastly, based on the completion phase for the strategic initiative, the K5 American Reading Company, ARC, literacy program, program has been adopted. Foundations is being implemented with fidelity. Common pacing guides for K5 literacy and math are completed. The reading and math teacher and district websites have been updated. There is a common grade book, and an Equity Coordinator, I'm celebrating it as well, has been hired to assist in the implementation of our anti-racist assessment practices, and we continue to draw on student culture to shape our curriculum. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ready Miss Godfrey? Welcome.
I'm Erica Godfrey. I am the district NTSF coordinator and district intervention specialist. And I'm going to highlight a few of the systems of support and give some updates. Systems of support play a critical role in CSD's efforts to support all students' learning and eliminate disproportionate outcomes in addition to supporting behavioral, social, and emotional well-being. From our research and design phase, last year, the district NTSF team started a collaboration with the Department of Equity and Student Support to identify a behavior screening system that will help to connect students with elevated risk levels to appropriate intervention. This year, we are developing the protocol for implementation from building administrators' assessment plans through designing and providing interventions at all tiers. The K12 district-wide interventions were introduced or expanded in 2021 as a means to extend learning opportunities beyond the standard school year. They include extended-day tutoring, Saturday schools, summer schools, and intercession. We are collecting data from stakeholders and revising the design to offer the highest quality of support. We are continuing our work with the State Dyslexia Pilot to create and implement dyslexia screening and intervention process in accordance to Senate Bill 48 that will go into effect in coming months. For the next phase of investment and implementation, to support this work, CSD has invested and implemented the following. A major barrier in district oversight was the inability to monitor student progress in a timely manner. Collapsing to one consistent tool at the primary and secondary grade band allows efficient monitoring. The purchase of the BASS III Behavior and Emotional Screening System, or BES, for grades three, six, and nine to serve as our universal behavior screener. Providing coaching support to embed the first two components of the Do4 framework. And Amplify. So the Amplify criteria have been revised to further expand opportunities for historically marginalized students to access, to access gifted and talented programming. The new criteria have been published on the CSD Gifted and Talented website. Kristin Givens, our Director of Instructional Programs, will be sharing the impact of this program, of this change later this year after implementation. CSD employs a collaborative gifted service model for academic services, K9. The Teaching and Learning Department is currently completing walkthroughs, and the Director of Instructional Programs is reviewing state-required documentation to identify areas of strength as well as areas of growth. The final bulleted list shows the items that are complete or in place for the 22, 23 school year. Normed Universal Screening, K12 for math, K12 for grades nine, twelve. Again, strain mine progress monitoring tools at the primary and secondary level. District and school-level leaders have conducted book studies for culturally responsive teaching and restorative practices. All intervention programs remain in place. Student data will continue to shape the design of each program. Suspension prevention is one of the tools utilized to help eliminate disproportionality. Each building has developed suspension prevention goals. The goals will be revisited and revised as indicated by student data. Amplify, which originated as an elementary program, then expanded to the middle school, has now been scaled up to grade 12, thereby making it a K12 initiative. All K2 students receive weekly critical and creative lesson plans designed by the gifted specialists and recently filling the behavior intervention, intervention gap. We will measure our systems of support by reviewing the student outcome data presented at the beginning of the presentation. Additionally, we know and understand that each of these phases listed are fluid and not completely linear, which is evidenced by the duplicates in the multiple phases.
Thank you. Right, we've got one last strategic initiative to go over, and welcome back, Dr. Banks.
I miss you so much I have to come back. The final strategic initiative we'll discuss this evening is High Leverage Practices. This area is all about how we teach, about making sure that we use scientifically-based, best instructional practices across all classrooms in the district. In this area, we consistently communicate high academic expectations for every student and empower students to achieve those expectations by interrupting instructional practices that produce dependent learners. We engage current events and challenges of society through a social justice lens and use that as a key focus of instruction. We communicate in linguistically and culturally responsive ways, and we initiate warm-demanding, caring, and culturally mediated instruction. We are continuing to follow through and build on the core practices for equity that were identified several years ago. We continue to deepen that understanding through professional development and our commitment to the IB and EL frameworks. All the work in this initiative relates directly to the due for CRE framework. Much of the work in this area is still in the research and design phase. We are currently doing professional development with administrators and professional development work with teachers is in the planning process to be rolled out next year. In the Invest and Implement phase, you will see just a smattering of the Do4 topics that we have already covered with administrators and coaches and will cover with teachers, such as dependent versus independent learners, metacognition, warm-demanding, and high expectations. Finally, in the Completed Phase, I'd like to highlight the collaboration between the Teaching and Learning Department and Equity and Student Support serves make Standards Plus and the Do4 framework closely to TEACs and LEACs. Tools that are currently being used to provide real-time feedback on teacher outcome, and we are able to do this easily thanks to the phenomenal work by Jennifer Dunn, who created an app and a dashboard that supports the walkthrough tool. Considering this initiative area, I am ecstatic to see the extended PV time that this board put in next year's schedule. And I'd like to imbue you with the impetus to ensure even more time for teacher professional development going forward. With more PV time, teachers can become deep learners of the Do4 content and thereby elevate the phenomenal work they're already doing. I'm sure you're familiar with the term "you get what you pay for." If CSD wants excellent teachers, we must be intentional about providing consistent and frequent professional development time to help them be so. Research shows us that an increase in quality teacher professional development pays off in student academic achievement. Thank you for allowing the time to share the transformative work we're doing in the district. I'll turn it back over to Dr. Banks.
Team, I want to give this group a round of applause. Even if Dr. Banks was coming in from a flight, but she, this is her team and Lilly's team, and they just do a great job supporting the work. So thank you both for all you do. So this is an opportunity for the board to have a discussion, ask some questions. We may not be able to answer questions you have tonight, but if we can't get the answers tonight, we will get those to you as soon as we can.
I had a question. I know that we have been talking about decolonizing the curriculum. And so where would that, it feels like under High Leverage Practices, maybe that that would, where that will fall, but where would, where can we look to see us starting that process?
Are you answering that question? Okay. We actually, I put together a district social studies committee, and we met actually last Friday. It consists of teachers and department heads from the secondary schools, the middle school, and the high school, but still trying to recruit elementary. However, some of the teachers do have elementary backgrounds. We've also recruited Ms. Weon, Weon Chin. She, I hope I'm pronouncing her name correctly. She is a parent in the community, the district, but she does a lot of, I think she has, not a degree, but she's part of a organization where they conduct social studies, multicultural research from different lenses throughout the state of Georgia. And so, and then we invited Anthony, who we mentioned earlier, our Equity Coordinator to be on this committee. And we've already mapped out the steps for evaluating K12 social studies curriculum, divided by different teams based on the elementary, middle, and high school. Anthony's doing a presentation on what decolonization is, because historically, you had a committee before we arrived, I think in early 2000, maybe 2010, 2011, who started this equity work.
Yes.
As it pertains to decolonizing curriculum. So he'll be leading that work. We're already looking at standards, the standards that we have, the standards that have been addressed, standards that have not been addressed, what does it look like? We're tapping into professors at local universities who the district already has relationships with, and we're expanding that with the assistance that we need, so they can give us additional resources. We're really focusing on collecting high-quality primary resources to lead this conversation. And we have the flexibility and the grace to do that because we implement an IB curriculum, which is phenomenal. That's where we are. Our next meeting is November 4.
So the area, this falls into our Standards Plus strategic initiative.
Yes, I understand.
And we will make sure in the January second quarter update that we provide a good overview for the board on where we are with that process as we go through that one.
Yeah, thank you.
And the goal, our goal, I don't know if it's too ambitious, is to finish this entire evaluation, K12, to present to the board in April.
Thank you. That's, that's exciting and encouraging.
We're really excited for the children and the possibility.
And I also want to highlight that even though that's an intentional one, focused on the social studies content, throughout the Do4 framework, we're intentionally looking at standards, talking through our planning meetings, looking at our resources. So even though that one's really focused on just social studies, we're decolonizing the curriculum every day as we work through planning, reviewing our standards, and how we approach and teach those standards.
I was curious when, I mean, I realize it is a continuous process, but when will some of the things that we're doing now, the beginning phase of some of what we're doing with social studies, when would we expect that to be in the classroom?
Well, ideally, because we want to use wisdom and be strategic, it would be ideal to see it actually in the classroom being implemented in August. Because we have to create the pacing guide. When you're doing alignment, it takes a minute. So standards need to find valid primary resources and other supports. And so you don't want to rush through the process. It cannot be done in isolation. We're looking forward to confirming with you and your colleagues in the January and then April, if we need to tweak it over the summer, and be prepared to roll it out the fall of '23.
So I incredibly appreciate the answer. I was thinking August was actually pretty aggressive. So that's fantastic that we're looking at moving it and getting it out that quick.
When you're talking about selection of resources, you can save resources in once they're vetted.
Um, well, thank you.
You're welcome.
Then I appreciate Dr. Banks advocating for more teacher training and time. I would be interested in what, if there are any benchmarks, what do the best systems that provide the best opportunities for teachers? What, what do they do? Are we, and I don't just necessarily mean Georgia, I mean truly, who does it best? And are we 30% below them? Are we at mark now? Like what should we, what specifically should we be thinking about from the budgetary standpoint so that we kind of understand what, what best in class looks like?
I'll be able to get you detailed now off the top of my head. The best professional development is actually not happening in the, it's happening in, in another area I'm forgetting right now. But what they are literally doing is setting aside entire day, week, or teachers to actually be able to do professional development. That time that they're setting aside every week has resulted in positive feedback. Follow some of that.
All right. But thank you again, team, for all your hard work on this. The last slide in this just shows an overview of when the next update will be. Esten, you want to hit the last slide? So January, we'll do a Quarter Two update, April, Quarter Three, and in July, we will do the Quarter Four update. So you can anticipate data coming up as we collect it and are ready to report on it. But we will continue with a similar format of showing kind of our progress through these phases of implementation. So board, if you have any feedback for the presentation style or format, I'd love to hear what some of that feedback is, not tonight, but at some point. So, right, our next topic of discussion is Theory of Action. So at our work session, we looked at this theory of action, tweaked it a little bit. I took the feedback from the board. So would love to get if this is a theory of action that the board is ready to kind of tentatively approve. Love to recommend that we put it into a policy, which I provided- Love to recommend that we put it into a policy, which I provided the board a draft of this policy. And the reason why it's important to move this forward even with a tentative approval from the board tonight is that we can really use this information to move forward with our strategic planning process. So agreeing to the standards that we believe in the district will help move us forward, kind of what is our baseline, how we are going to hold the teachers accountable, and what kind of autonomy are we, do we want to provide our teachers? As well as on the bottom, kind of those, the overall, how all of those things connect. So any updates on the board from the additions or changes from what we talked about just a couple of weeks ago?
When you, when you said that it is one of the policies that we're reviewing, it is in the document here or it's going to be this?
It's in your packet. It is draft policy, B A B, school governance. And that policy really gives an expanded context to the theory of action. So this is like a one pager quick look, but the actual policy gives to explaining the rationale behind it, why we would put this into place, what are some more specifics behind some of these things? Expanding on what does empowerment look like, explaining why we have these standards, what they look like in our instructional framework, particularly the core practices for equity, why we put student standards and teachers at the very center. So it just really expands on it. This is kind of a one pager view.
I don't have any additional feedback.
Yeah, yeah. I added some of the things in the bottom about equitable inclusion, and then the resources. They tried to just really capture and clarify what the board sentiment was. So if there are thumbs up on this, we'll put it forth for final approval at the next meeting.
Do we need to vote at this point or do we not?
No, I think I've got agreement that we're moving forward on it. So that's, that's what we need right now. Thanks. All right, next agenda item, AP and IB and AP testing fees. Just wanted to have a quick conversation with the board. I know we had some parents talking. Came to public comment last meeting, brought up some questions about the information that was initially shared with the board last year about testing fees. We did some additional research and found that there are some districts around that do pay for percentages of IB testing. But I, my recommendation for the board at this point is that we keep with what we decided. That's what we planned our budget on. It would require a budget amendment to make any changes for this year. But that we look at next year possibly saying, you know, paying for one IB test or one, and/or one AP test per student. Just so, we want to encourage students to take those tests. They are meaningful for the students. But I do want to also say, you know, for the number of students that go through the program in CSD, it is extraordinarily, does become a pretty big financial burden for our school system. So I do think we need to balance that approach a little bit and look at ways to pay a little bit for some of the students, but not still paying for like seven or eight assessments every single year for these students. So I think we can find a middle ground going forward. But I know we did have parents asking us to change what we were doing this year, and I would not recommend that we make any changes this year. So any questions or comments from the board?
My only question was, I think in some of the, in some of the districts we were looking at where they were, they were paying for AP and IB tests. There was a, there was a huge, huge spread of sizes. So some of them were very small districts, some were very, were large compared to like APS. And then within that, there was a large spread of how many were AP, how many were IB. And an AP test does not cost the same as an IB test. So I don't know if there's, I don't know if it influences decision making at all, if there's a way to just compare an apple to an apple and an orange to an orange. So we can see, because I think it's hard to say, yes, some districts pay and then some districts don't. But it's a different budgetary impact if you're talking about, you know, if we, if we were to say, yes, well, APS pays. Well, you know, if APS, 100% of their seniors are taking IB tests, then that would be a very different monetary factor. But it was, it was very, when I was looking at it, it was very different. So I think it was very hard to say, if the question on the table is how this impacts their budget, it was, I couldn't draw conclusions.
Yeah, I think, yeah, and that's the additional data we can pull and look at, but we also need to take into context Decatur. Decatur is a much different system than APS. It's a much different system than DeKalb County. So it makes sense for Decatur, I think needs to be at the forefront of the discussion.
What is the amount that we anticipate saving this year by not paying those fees?
I can't remember. It was over $200,000. It was at least two and a half staffing points.
To a couple of the things that I liked about some of the policies around this, even the ones that did pay for all of the fees, were that if a student signs up for the test and then does not take the test, the student then becomes 100%, well, the parents of it become 100% responsible for the test. There's a way to ensure the students are taking the, the tests that they actually sign up for. I think it would be helpful to understand how many tests fell into that bucket. How many tests did we pay for that weren't taken? Uh, because it's a different policy if it's half than if it is 0.1%, right? And I am, it's just honestly a little bit uncomfortable if we're going to say we're going to revisit it next year because then it means that we have a year now of seniors that we're sort of just not allowing to benefit from whatever our potential long-term program. So I, I would like to encourage us, if we're going to think about revisiting this and have some kind of long-term policy that we adopt for, you know, the foreseeable future, that we try to see if we can't get something like that in place for the kids this year. It just doesn't seem fair that we had a one year of kids that are left out of it. And, and you know, it's different going forward. Whatever that policy may be, I'm not suggesting a specific policy here. It just doesn't fit well with me that we would have one class of kids that doesn't get any benefit from whatever our overall policy might be.
Yeah, I hear you, and I think that's a good thing for discussion, but I don't, I don't know that we could. Future, if the board may decide, no, we don't want to pay for any of it. So why, I don't know that we would say, hey, we're going to backpedal and then find a middle ground this year. And then next year, we decide, no, we don't want to do that anyway.
But our, our decision doesn't have to be made this month. Like we could be having this conversation in the next couple of months and have a decision in place before this budget is now to withhold the seniors this year that could align with what we want to do long-term.
Uh, the board won't work on the final budgets until probably March, April. Then they're already have taken, most of them will have paid and signed up for their test. I don't know that we could implement something, a change this year, is what I'm saying.
I guess my big takeaway then is if, if, if we think as a board or as a group that we are likely going to revisit this and potentially suggest changes, we should figure out how to do it as quickly as we possibly can so the existing seniors also get benefit from it. It does not sit well with me if we're going to make a long-term policy that we have excluded one specific year from. It just doesn't, I'm not comfortable with that.
So do we need to take a vote on what we want to do for this current year?
Not at this, I would not recommend taking a vote at this time. But if the board would like us to look into, like trying to foresee in the future what this would look like, we can try to put some numbers together. I just don't know that we're at a place in our current budget to really determine the overall financial impact this change has made to make an educated assumption for next year.
I think the point of clarification, is this something we vote on? Because we didn't vote on this first thing.
You did in the fact that it was a deduction from the budget.
From the budget. So we would be voting on a budget amendment. So I think that, I think that what we first need to do is understand the, the facts of the numbers that we're dealing with.
Exactly.
So what would be, if, if we did decide we were going to, if we were going to pay for the seniors for this year, how much would the budget be adjusted, I think is what we're looking for. But I think the, the first thing is maybe truly understanding kind of what the initial question was. Because initially, we thought that maybe we were an outlier in that we were paying, but nobody else was paying. And then we realized that maybe that wasn't entirely true. But even, like I said initially, looking, there's a little bit of a mixed bag. So some districts pay a portion, some districts make you pay like a down payment. So if you're going to, if you, you pay and then agree to take the test, and if you don't take the test, then they keep the money or some flair on that. But then, like I said, there's, some of these are small districts where you're talking about a cohort of 50 kids.
Yeah.
10 kids. Yeah. So maybe we need some clarification on that as well.
But our decision wasn't based, we didn't make the decision, we made the decision based on the financial impact to CSD, not because we wanted to be in line with everybody else.
But that was, no, I think some of it was, some of that was a, was a deciding factor in that we were like, well, if we're, yes, it was budgetary, but yes, some of it was that. We were like, well, maybe we're doing, maybe we're out, we're out of alignment with what other districts are doing. That was an argument on the table, if I remember correctly. If I'm wrong.
One point, no, it's one point.
No, that was, that is correct. That has certainly influenced my decision-making. I think that there are good policy reasons to question whether we would take tax dollars from people on fixed income to pay for tests for relatively affluent families. I think there is a policy reason to take a look at drawing back a little bit of what we were spending on. But part of that was influenced by, we were informed that we were an outlier. And it turns out we weren't an outlier. In fact, by now not paying for any of it, it looks like we're an outlier. And so it does influence my decision-making, particularly if there is potentially a future policy that we're going to evaluate that would change how we do it and we just leave one cohort of kids in the works. That's what I'm not comfortable with.
I guess my, my only thing is, is that are, are we making our decisions on being outliers? I mean, because we are outlier on a lot of, like we're, you know, number one in the, Decatur High is number one in the state in SAT school. Like, so like that whole outlier language, you know, doesn't do anything for me. I guess the bottom line is, you know, what's best for CSD financially? And it just, you know, like we're going to be making decisions that future generations will benefit that from that. I mean, like all this equity work, these past generations haven't benefited from, right? I mean, so things are constantly changing. And so it just kind of seems awkward for us to make a decision now because in the future, we may change the decision. And, you know, we don't even know which way we're going to go with that decision.
I would, I would agree with you on that. And I also, to Carmen's point, is there's so many variations to the size of the school, to how they do it. So I don't even really know if looking at that information will inform us any better on whether or not we should pay or not pay. I think it's more, again, to Jane, Jane's point, we need to just look at what's best for, for our school district, what we think makes sense for our school district and for our size, and then we decide based on that. And then sometimes, again, you may make, we may make a decision, and then we look through two years and we relook at everything. We relook at the data, and maybe we make another decision based on what we're looking at two years later. So then it may be, like you said, two years, school, students may pay. And then there might be a year where they pay half or we do a new program. But we can, you know, information that we gather, I don't think we can compare it to, to an APS or a Gwinnett or anywhere else for that matter.
Because I'm just trying to figure out what we're trying to decide right now. If we're going to get, you know, either we're going to keep, keep it like it is for the rest of the school year, or we're going to have to make an amendment to the budget?
So I guess the question is, how many board members want us to look at a possible amendment? Or if the majority of the board is not interested in that, then we say, sorry, we're not going to do that, we'll look at it for next year.
Right. That's, that's kind of what I was trying to ask earlier, so.
So it sounds like you and Tasha feel like we don't need to be looking at an amendment, kind of keep things as is. Hans and Carmen, it sounds like you're more interested in that. James, I haven't heard from you, but if I'm wrong, let me know.
It is unfortunate we make decisions with half or incorrect information. That's a, that's a great example of it. But I, we've made a decision. I don't think that I ever considered what other schools did or what they're doing at Druid Hills for their IB students. I'm comfortable with our decision as is. It doesn't mean that, as you eloquently said, next school year, if we decide that we can expand what it means to be need-based to get it, that I'm fine with that. Is it unfortunate for the class of 2023? Yes, it is.
Sounds like we've got three that are comfortable with the decision made, hold tight, and then, but we'll continue to look at stuff going forward to make recommendations for future years, is what I heard. If I heard different, let me know. All right, next topic on the list is the senior tax exemption. So in your packet, you have a table of data. So just first want to kind of walk through that. In that first section, there is a summary titled exemptions. The list is the exemptions to the left and the total asset, total assessed value of the exemptions under the appropriate fiscal year. The second section of the type, of the summary titled local impact lists the exemptions and the fiscal impact or loss of revenue for the Board of Education. And then the third section titled number of exemptions, lists the numbers of residents that were exempt for each of the exemptions. So under the first title, section titled exemptions, the 1 million under the 2020 digest for FY21 means that there were 20 residents as listed under the third section, number of exemptions that qualified for the $50,000 exemption. For the Board of Education, the local fiscal impact or loss of revenue is listed under the local impact section under the annual revenue in the amount of $20,250. And this amount was derived by multiplying 1 million of the assessed value by the FY20 millage rate of 20.25. And this amount equates to .0099 millage equivalent. The approximate $6.6 million and $6.9 million loss of revenue from the expired S4 exemption is shown under the local impact in the 21 digest for FY22 under the actual revenue. This exemption gave homeowners at the age of 65 and older 100% exemption on their school, exemption for school property. Under the section titled number of exemptions, this provides the number of seniors that qualified for each exemption for each fiscal year. There is a, a column with projected amounts, but that was just an initial projection based on a number. I understand that there are some board members who have some alternate opinions on how we could calculate the projections. So I'm willing to entertain how we could possibly look at those in a different way. So I think tonight, focusing on the exemptions and the actual digests that we've had, and then also reviewing the timeline that's proposed to move this work forward so we can get to the legislature on time and that we can partner with our delegates to make sure that we've got everyone on the same page when it gets to be time to put the exemption to the. Any further questions, concerns? I think I want to pull up my timeline. I didn't let the board review the timeline that I proposed. Discussion, really.
Without jumping into details on that last projected column, I do want to make sure to take the time to get it, to get it right. There are, I do have some concerns about it, and it has a budgetary impact. Obviously, the amount that doesn't show up in revenue is something that we have to cover. And so let's make sure we take the time to do that, to get it right. In that first column, and I think it's actually in a couple of the columns, I was a little bit confused. So the 20 exemptions taken of $50,000 amounted to the $1 million that's at the top, correct? That is, so that was calculated. And so that's a million dollars of exemptions that, the, the max exemption amount. So that is the value of the home that was exempted from the millage rate. That is the, and then, so what that means is the $1 million of exempted home value resulted in a $20,000 reduction in tax due to the exemptions that were taken on those 20 homes.
I lost what you were saying. Just got to be honest. Thank you.
I just, I wanted to make sure, okay, I, I believe that is correct. And so that's where, all right, that helps me understand exactly where the calculations are coming from in each, each chart. What is interesting and what I would like to see included as a part of this, if we can, for the actual, is what was the projected change based upon the reports that were done originally when the exemption was set out. So there were some estimates of what this exemption would cost. And it would be helpful to understand, it, it looks to me like it, this had a much smaller impact, I think, than was assumed under some of those reports, if my memory serves. I'm trying to remember, but I, but I believe. But I, but I believe if, if we're talking about the aggregate of these exemptions being 6.2 million, I mean, that's much higher than we had estimated, um, that it would be.
The, the starting work for the committee was that we should pass and use the existing ones to create a $6 million exemption for the seniors. Um, so.
So we got close then, is what you're saying?
Well, I, I am shocked that it's that close, looking at it, given the increase in property value, the increase in numbers and that sort of stuff. Not to change subject, but the numbers that stand out the most to me and the one thing that I would like to add to our agenda as a board is communication about the other exemptions that exist. Um, though the woman who presented, for instance, that said that her neighbor only has social security and is very meager, she should, she should have none. I mean, S, S1 says, if you're only living on a pension and/or social security, you have a massive school exemption that still exists, indicator that didn't go anywhere. In fact, the, the second number that stands to them out is in, in 2021, am I correct? 1,562 senior homes received an exemption? And in 2022 is 1,875?
Well, no, no, no. So let me, let me jump on that as well. It, that is not, that is not the number of homes. That is the number of exemptions and homes are taking multiple exemptions. To your exact point, I would actually look at the, the bigger telling number is you look at the 25 people in 2021 that took GS1 versus the 284 people in this year that took GS1. It does actually appear that we're down and that people maximize their opportunities to take exemptions. And the proof is in the pudding, I think, in how, you know, there's a, well, $700,000 difference between 2021 versus this year. Probably the bulk of that is within the 65 to 69 income range above $53,000 a year.
But GS1 wasn't even necessary. If you were over the age of 65 prior to last year.
Precisely. But the point being that the people that then lost that F4 went and took every one of the other exemptions that they could qualify for.
Yeah, as they should, including the veterans. That, that number also stood out, that we added 37, uh, veterans that received and applied for that tax exemption. And I doubt very seriously that was new 37 fully disabled veterans moving into the city of Decatur and buying a house. It's far more likely that it was people taking advantage of it. And I, to my initial point, I think as a school board, we need to do a better job of letting people know that some of these exemptions that you have to apply for, including the income on which is not fully being taken advantage of, are out there.
Sure. What was in, I, I thought that we had, I mean, maybe it was 32 homes that we thought was going to qualify, but that's, I feel like we're actually not that far off from the income limit. But again, that should have been in the report. So I, I will work on the, to ensure that we see what our projections were versus what the outcomes were.
Um, I think an important piece to look at too is the, in the middle one, the local impact, the numbers of the millage rate. So for last year, if we didn't have any of these senior tax exemptions, um, it would have, we would have had to raise our millage rate by 2.5. So like, I, I think that's an important piece to talk of exemptions and how it impacts everyone. So exempting a few for the overall budget impact, I think, is another thing just for the board to consider as we move forward.
Well, we, I, the other thing I think is probably worthwhile talking publicly about so that the community is aware, is, I, I don't, correct me if I'm wrong, there isn't any conversation or appetite to eliminate senior homestead exemptions. So it isn't, this isn't a conversation to get rid of any of this. We may tweak things, like I, for one, would particularly low, but obviously that has to be balanced against the impact that it would have elsewhere. Um, which just kind of brings me back to the point around that last column. This is complicated math. It isn't a straight growth rate. You have actuarial tables that play into this. You have, uh, you want increments above what the exemption is, they have to be accounted for. There's a whole host of things in here that are kind of nonlinear and complicated. And so we needed to have support to run some of that analysis. Do we have a plan to do that again? And are we going to be, like, what is the plan to have that kind of support and to?
This is the initial conversation. No plans have been made for anything. I think setting the timeline, looking at what exemptions were taken is the first step. Um, that's as far as we have gotten in this process.
Can I recommend that we have a committee similar to what we did before and, and seek that kind of help? Because I think that, that would be something that we would want to consider. And then that committee could also make the recommendations in terms of the kind of support that they would need running this analysis. I think it's a little unfair to ask the finance department to run it. It is complicated.
Yeah, that's a board decision, so.
I, I would agree with that. I think the committee that worked on this before was, was extremely helpful.
Yeah. But, and I was wondering, um, I was talking to James earlier, um, just picking his brain about this and thinking like, how will we, are we, will we, will we seek out Georgia State again to help us figure these numbers out, like, um?
I think they did a good job.
Yeah, I was running with that question.
So, yeah, the, Hans's first point's a good one. Like, what, there was a projection of the numbers. We, we should pick those up and then see what the first year impact was. That'll tell you how close it'll be. Two is a question that I don't know of any committee that will be capable of answering it, but which is, how much can we afford to not tax, you know, in our budget without, without adjusting the millage rate and having to, you know, their senior means 6 million is the first year, they're going to go up, they're going to go down? I don't know that we have the capability of answering that. And the, like, I'm fine with 6 million. That's great. We kind of had that conversation. Georgia State came back with that, gave that assessment. If 10 years from now it's going to stay at 10, 6 million, great. Is it going to balloon to 30? Is it going to take away four, you know, a whole bunch of teachers? That's a problem. The other thing is the income part of it. The, the committee and everyone was very excited about, you know, kind of targeting the income, particularly between 65 and 70 and that sort of stuff. There's a big discrepancy in that income level when you look at Atlanta. So, for instance, the Cabs is like 30,000 and John's Creek is 80,000. Yeah, that, that is a giant, giant gap, and I don't know how to do that. Um, but we did get a presentation. There was data provided to us by Georgia State previously about as you move that income chart back and forth, how many extra households and then what the city and what the impact on the budget was, which was quite, quite nice. It was, it basically said, it'll cost the school $200,000, but you're going to positively impact 20 extra senior homes. That was worth it. But then if it's, you hit 50 extra senior homes and you call the school district $8 million, we, we can't do that. We can't run a school system that way. So it definitely requires a deep dive, I think, on those three things. And we're talking about a short timeline because the legislatures only gave us a short senior tax exemption that we need to get working on.
So it sounds like we'd like to put a committee together. Um, did the board have an opportunity to look at the suggested timeline to try to get this, um, moving forward? So basically, uh, taking time between now and April of 2023 to study the current exemption, answer some of the questions about what may need to change, um, what should stay the same, drafting, um, a new exemption or whatever tweaks need to be made sometime between May 2023 and August 2023 for the board to be able to vote by October 2023 on any revision so that we can start meeting with our delegates. And obviously, working with them all the way up through this. We don't want to just dump this on them at that point. Uh, but really focusing on those, um, efforts of, you know, sharing the, sharing what's out there, how it would impact, um, and from January through December so that they can take it to, um, the legislator, um, in that, in that session, which is January through April 2024, because it's got to be on the ballot in November 2024.
And the board had that listed as meet with delegates in January 23 to this.
Well, I was saying that we've got to get them on board now. We've got to start this conversation now.
Yep.
Particularly around the timing of the, like, they gave us two years. I think we should ask for more and not settle for less than five. So if we push, I think James was saying, like, ask for seven and they'll push back and maybe say five. So I think we need to start working those relationships now.
Agreed. And I also think it helps to clearly articulate the reason why we're doing this, right? So the original obje- uh, objectives of the senior homestead exemption was very specific. Very specifically targeted to ensure to be able to age in place and remain in Decatur. And that we weren't forcing seniors out due to, to escalating tax rates on, on people that had fixed income. And so that, to the extent that we're capable of articulating that as a policy that we are wanting to uphold, uh, I think that that's helpful in, in those conversations with the delegation and with the community and with directing the committee in any of the path they pursue.
And also letting the community know that we did, um, request a five-year on this last one. Um, and so the reason why we're speaking about it again now isn't necessarily because we wanted to, but we have to. Um, so maybe requesting seven years and seeing what we get and also starting those conversations now versus.
But I would say the benefit of a shorter window of time is it allows us to revisit the income thing at a faster rate, particularly with inflation rates now, right? So it does allow us to revisit that. If we aren't doing it on a routine basis, we ought to be thinking about some kind of inflationary element that allows, um, for those changes of income to be accommodated.
Okay. So I think the next thing we need to do is go ahead and start finding people that want to serve on the committee. Um, and then start digging into the, digging into the numbers and identifying if we want to hire GSE like we did last time and what we're going, how we're going to do that work forward. All right. Um, last thing for, uh, uh, discussion is the initial policies that are for initial review. Um, so in your packet, you have, um, a list of lots of policies related to human resources. Um, so were there any questions on those? Legal is also taking a look at these currently to give us any input on recommended changes. We went through and made the changes that kind of matched our current policies to align them together. Um, so not a lot of changes, um, from the recommended, um, policies given to us by GSA. Okay. So then the final thing for actual, this would be for approval is to approve the, um, agenda items that we put forth to the board last month. We did not receive any public feedback from those. They've been on the website for a month. Um, I know Hans had a question about kind of making sure we get the money out of different buckets in a, in a sequential way.
And did that, what was the, did we get an answer on that?
So the answer, and Lynetta, did you have a clarification on, like, that request for paying for things in a sequential order with different funds?
Great, great. And I, and I do, I, yeah, very much support, oh, in parentheses or whatever, so long as it's applicable. But if it is applicable, yes, I think it should come out of the swatch.
Okay. Okay, we'll add that in then.
I asked that question three years ago and it was, they looked for it. Sergio did a presentation that was like, oh yeah, I'm, I'm looking for swatch. Yeah.
We do. Okay. You want to, if those were good then, if you want to do a motion, we can.
Okay. And so we're going to make a motion to approve?
The, I would say the, to approve the policies listed on the agenda.
Okay. All right. May I have a motion to approve the, um, board policies listed in the agenda for approval?
I move to, uh, approve the board policies, uh, listed on the agenda.
Thank you. Thank you. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. So the board policies listed for approval have been approved. All right, moving on. This month, the board was provided copies of school improvement plans as information only. Um, we have future dates listed on the agenda for upcoming meetings, trainings, and retreats. Board members, are there any questions about the future dates for the work of the board? No? Okay, all right. Well, thank you, everyone who attended and who are listening in, uh, virtually. We will adjourn tonight's meeting at 9:17.